All right, it's seven o'clock. It actually looks like we've got all eight board members. Got about 129 people on so far, and I presume we'll have more. Welcome. We'll go ahead and get started. So with that, I'm going to call the meeting. It's a special meeting of the Board of Education to order. Michael, if you could please show us the flag. We'll do the pledge of allegiance. See if I can get this to work. One second. Sorry, having computer difficulties on my end. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. If I could get a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
I'll, this is Karen Hirsch. I'll make a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
Miss Hirsch?
I'll second it.
And Mr. Kelly will second it. Fantastic. We're going to take a quick roll call vote. So Bernstein is a yes. Stowe?
Yes.
Hirsch?
Yes.
Downey?
Sorry, Downey did not get the link.
Oh, I thought we were all on. All right. Michael Antonaccio, could you please check in with Christina Downey? All right, we'll skip to Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Ms. Kowalski?
Yes.
Ms. Olson?
Yes.
And Mr. Scher. Peter, I think you're muted.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, we'll give Christina a moment to log on while she's doing that. I want to thank everybody for joining. I see our numbers of attendees are climbing. I know we've got a lot of curious community members out there, so thank you for taking the time. Thank you for joining our virtual Board of Education special meeting. Before we start, just point out a couple of things. The agenda for the meeting is on our Board Docs website. I presume you all know we're going to be discussing the reopening plan tonight. Our odds of ends. If you haven't seen the agenda, you can go to the GreenwichSchools.org website, click on Board of Education, and if you scroll down to meetings, it'll take you to Board Docs. You just click on today's date and then click on the agenda. So it's a special meeting. Public comments are being submitted via email. You can email all the Board of Education members by sending a single email to boardofedmembers@Greenwich.K12.CT.us. And it's Greenwich.K12.CT.us. The comments that were received prior to the meeting are going to be posted on our website. Meeting tonight is discussion by and among the superintendent, board members, and the superintendent staff. I would ask the participants to state their name each time they speak. If I don't say your name, please do say it for us. We're going to use the raise the hand function like we've been using, so I can call on people in turn. And us board members keep their comments short and concise. And for voting, we're going to take all of our votes via roll call. We actually have one action item and then our favorite, which is Mr. Kelly's motion to adjourn at the end of our meeting. I see Ms. Downey is on. I'm sorry you missed the link. We're glad you're back with us. All right, with that, the first item of business tonight is the one I think most of you are here to listen to, which is the school reopening plan. So Dr. Jones, why don't you take it away?
Thank you, Mr. Bernstein. Mike, if we could start with the PowerPoint, please? So I'm going to walk you through some information just so that the full Board of Education is all coming with the same information. I know some of you have been able to watch some of the planning meetings, some of you have not. So go ahead and go to the next slide, Mike. Just, just so you understand the organizational structure, we have our district task force right in the middle, and that is where Karen Hirsch has been the representative for the board. And we're coming to this really with four main priorities, and one is to maintain health and safety guidelines, to enhance our focus on our social emotional learning. We've talked a lot about that. The high quality programming for all ages. And then on that dark blue just on the left, analysis of achievement data to close the gap, accelerate the pathway, and maximize learning gains for all students. We want to make sure those four priorities are focused on. And what happens with the task force is we're getting inputs from all of these different focus groups that are in that white on the outer edges. And those of you who have had a chance to look at the document know it's pretty complex and a lot of the requirements in everything from transportation to food service, the health advisement, just the curriculum aspect of it. And we're going to go through all of that when we actually look at the document. Go ahead, Mike. We are just reiterating this for, and I know you've talked about it quite a bit since March and April. We are preparing for asynchronous and synchronous instruction. I've had that question sent several times, just even in the last few days. We're preparing face-to-face and remote learning options. It's a requirement that we do that. So parents, again, when you see the full document, there is an opt-out for parents who aren't comfortable coming back face-to-face. And we are preparing for back-to-school analysis of learning needs. And our summer school right now is live. It is on a schedule, and so we're having an opportunity to really see that work this summer and just test our platforms, and it's going well. So we've been pleased with that. For distance learning, we did have a survey right at the very end of school. As the board knows, I left it open for several weeks, and people were still taking it up until I closed it literally last week. We ended up with 1,566 responders. And this just gave us an idea of how people were feeling about distance learning. Go ahead, Mike. You can go to the next one. Thanks. And this is, we started with preschool. So what we're looking for here is we want to see that green portion of the pie chart grow for us. We want to see it in the summer. We want to see it in the fall. How many people felt like it was a good or great experience? And not surprisingly, it was most difficult for pre-K. Those are our littlest, youngest learners. And you'll see that very difficult. The gold section was at 32%. Again, we want to see this continue to grow and enhance. And our focus groups are also really helping us with this because some of the platforms that we hadn't used before, we discovered about halfway through this process, how can you get our youngest learners more independent when they are really reliant on their parents to help them? The next slide, of course, is K5, and what you'll see is the green grows a little bit more. It's at 35%. That blue, it was challenging, but we made it work, and the very difficult drops a little bit to 20%. So again, that's not surprising because our students become a little bit more independent. I think it was still very challenging for K5 families, and we're continuing to work on what we can do to make that better. And I do think that our live teaching component is going to help with that. For middle school, again, you see more, and it's progressive as they're going through the grades. 25% saw it was difficult, but 46% of our families had a good or great experience. And then for high school, not surprisingly, again, 50% had good or great experience. 22% still found it difficult, and that very difficult range stayed fairly consistent across the board. And so we are doing lots of reviews this summer just about platforms and, you know, what made it difficult and what are the things that we can do to help? And again, I think we're making huge strides on that, and we're seeing it in summer school right now. This is just basically a Wordle where it gives you what are the words that were most common, what went well. People were very appreciative of their teachers. A lot of teachers really went out of their way to, and staff, also our non-certified staff, went out of their way to call families, stay in touch, and really be supportive of other children. Flexibility. Some people really love the flexibility just because of what was happening in their family and their home life. They liked having Google meets and Zooms. But again, when we go to the next slide, what people want to see more of, schedule. So the people that didn't like flexibility want it more scheduled. They want more live instruction, and it was very difficult for parents, so they want us to continue to work on that. And again, we've taken all of this to heart during our focus groups. We're getting phenomenal information from not only our teachers, but our parents. And you'll see these focus groups here in just a minute. Go ahead, Mike. So again, we are committed to enhancing the remote learning instruction. These are some commitments we're making to the community for more live teaching, that succinct schedule. We do think there's a majority that wants succinct schedule, and it's easier for us to flex for a family who this succinct schedule is not working for and work with that family. Better sound quality. This came across loud and clear the other day from our special education focus group that the sound quality, teachers weren't equipped with the tools and resources that they need. Teacher access to tools. There are some things that our teachers really need. Some of them are on a free version. They needed to be on the professional versions as we discovered the best platforms for this type of remote teaching. And enhancement of the Google platform. We are moving to the enterprise version, which will give us features that we did not have before. And features like raise the hand are coming out in the enterprise version. We'll have a higher quality of video. There are several aspects of that we're very excited about with Google that we'll have in the fall that we didn't have last spring. These are just when we've been meeting as a task force, and again, it's 10 o'clock meetings. We do have another one tomorrow. We go through a lot of information, and just as a reminder, when we go through the planning document, everything is in play right now. We get new information from the state, if not daily, definitely weekly, and it does impact in how we're planning. So our document is due to the state next Friday, not this coming, but the following. We also are getting focus group input. We want to be as inclusive as we can. We had a Q and A in Spanish. We've had about 200 people watch that so far. We had a special education focus group, and again, I think they're planning for an additional one because everybody, we found it wonderful and very helpful, and the parents did as well to be able to express how they could help us. Our elementary teacher focus group, secondary, we did our specialist today, and they come with, you know, lots of different viewpoints than even elementary or secondary because some of them teach across multiple buildings, multiple grades. And we have a PTAC input session I do this week on the 15th. And I know the board saw their questions that came tonight. They had about 80 some odd questions that have already been submitted. We also on Friday, just another opportunity for people to ask questions and get answers is there was a question and answer link in the family note last Friday. And as of earlier today, there were about 369 questions that are in that document that we're going to start working through just to make sure people know where to find the information and the answers that they want because this is, this is really important to our entire community. Our teacher and staff survey, we had 806 teachers take the survey. Some of you may have seen in the GEA letter in the public comments tonight. They're pleased with that. So are we. 262 staff members, those are non-certified, non-teaching. Doesn't mean they're necessarily non-teaching. If you're a parent, you still really work with children, but it's the non-certified staff. I've had somebody asking what that meant. Family survey, we had 6,044 responses. That is a very, very strong response. We had, we sent out just over 7,000, so this is probably one of the strongest responses that we've seen. If we look at just this basic question, if conditions remain the same as they are today, how comfortable, you know, are you with returning five days a week with classes of 20 plus, social distancing to the best of our ability? And these questions are phrased this way because they match very similar to what's coming out from the state in, you know, as much as feasible. And so we really wanted to test the water on how people were feeling. The top chart that you're looking at is, those are our parents and guardians. And if you look to the far right where you look at grand total, about 30% are really comfortable sending their children back to school. And if you look at the bottom of that, where it's not, not at all comfortable, it's about 22%. Down on the bottom, you're looking at our certified staff. And Mike, can you actually, sorry, I can't see the numbers on my screen. So if you look on the certified staff, what you're seeing for the grand total is very comfortable, was only 11%. So what it tells us is our parents are a little bit more comfortable than our staff, and we still have some work to do for both families and staff, but especially for our teachers. And when you look at not comfortable in returning, it was at 43, 46, 43%. So where parents were sitting at 22%, and again, that's almost double where we know we have work to do to help our teachers feel more comfortable. It doesn't mean that they don't want to work with us. It means that we just need to continue to, part of it is communication about what are we doing and what are the components of the state plan that we're actually going to implement. This is our non-certified staff, and interesting enough, our non-certified staff, we had 21% that were comfortable, and we had about 26% that were not comfortable. So our non-certified staff do feel a little bit more comfortable than our teachers. And I think part of that is because our non-certified staff, if we look at areas like the cafeteria, they are still serving lunches right now out in our community. They've been out, you know, out in the public. It's the same way with custodial and maintenance. So I think that they've had a little different experience, and I think maybe that's why they're feeling a little bit more comfortable, not as scared. So this was a question that we ask our teachers, and it's, you know, quite long, but given the health or concern status, I'd prefer to become part of a digital learning team, working with students and their families who do not want to re-enter school unless there's a vaccine or a treatment. I would become part of the digital team, knowing that live teaching, video recording, high-quality project learning would be provided for me. And I understand that TEPAL, which is our evaluation system, is required for all staff, and it would be based on distance learning. And again, just as a reminder, we must have a remote option. So we are going to need some teachers who are going to be remote, either because of their leave status. So go ahead and go to the next question, if you would, Mike. So if you look at the next question, given my current health or concern status, if schools return to normal in September with the minimal social distancing on buses and other areas, I'd feel comfortable returning to work and may need to seek medical guidance for leave. I'd be uncomfortable returning to work. So when we look at those two questions and we put them together, it just lets us know, go ahead to the next slide, Mike. Again, planning to come back with no reservations is about 30%. And when we look at, we've got about 38% that are unsure. We have about 10% that just would be interested in remote teaching. So again, we're going to have to really drill down and figure out where our stuff is from a health, a medical, and just providing, again, the remote option that were required by, by the state. Next slide. For our parent and guardian survey, again, it was one response per student. It just closed today. We left it open right up until today to get as much as we could. So when you look at the graph, the bar chart that's next, what you see is how comfortable are you sending your child back to five days, asking that same kind of question? Our district average was 30% in sending their children back, and those are the schools across the bottom. So you can see there's really differences. Some schools were just above 40% in how comfortable they were, and some were as low as just about 10%. So again, that's making sure everybody's getting good information, that they know what we're doing and what we're going to do to keep their children safe and re-entry. And then how comfortable are you sending your child back to five days? And this is how many were not at all comfortable. And again, you'll have, you see one building was as high as 40%. The average was 22. So what, what it's telling us right now, it actually matches what they said we should expect around the country, that about 20 to 22% would not be comfortable sending their children back to school, and that that teacher number has been generally, again, across the country, very similar within that 2022 range, percent range. If you look at this, what you're looking at is students and staff regularly wash their hands. What, you know, what are the things that are most important to families? Hand sanitizer provided in every classroom. You'll see that was a mandatory must-have. And again, that's something that when you look at like hand sanitizer, we're not required by the state of Connecticut to provide it in every classroom, but we had already made that decision before we saw these results that we felt like we needed that for our staff and teachers to feel comfortable about coming back and for parents to feel comfortable. So I'm not going to read all of these to you, but it's, there's some really great information there. When you get into wearing masks, it's very split. Some families feel like it's a mandatory must-have, and others feel like it is just way too much. But again, that's one, and you'll see in the plan, that is not our local decision. The state has made that decision for us, and it is a requirement. And so we are, mask-wearing is something that is part of our plan because it must be by the state. If you, can you drive your school to school if the bus is limited to 12? And if we go back to what the CDC guidance said several weeks ago, the bus was really minimal. Then when they came out with the guidance for the fall, it was a little unusual because it was pretty much just put all the kids on the bus that want to ride the bus, but when you get into the building, social distancing and cohorting, you needed to try to uphold that for safety. So, you know, our, our goal really for the buses is trying to find out how many people would actually transport their children for the students who ride the bus. We had 1,987 who responded that their children do ride the bus. And out of those 18%, or 364 said no, they wouldn't be able to transport. But we did have 62% say they would be willing to transport. So when we come back in the fall, we, we are going to have to get some help from families if we're going to open our doors and be able to have the buses where we can have some social distancing maintained on the buses because our buses run very, very full. So we're going to switch to the planning document now. And I know a lot of you have probably seen that, but we're going to walk through it just so that, again, everybody understands what's in it. And this document, again, is due to the state next week. And we did, we talked about that page already, so we'll stop right here. So we, in this plan, we must account for a low transmission risk, moderate, and critical. And really, these are three different aspects in returning for, in a full return to school or a hybrid, some sort of hybrid return, or full distance learning. And this is a requirement from the state. And just below that, you'll see alternative available to families. And just underneath that, where it says CSTE, that's because it comes from the requirement document, gives you the page number. Where we must, it's almost like running two schools. We have to have the remote option available for families who do not want to return. And then if you look at those priorities, those are what we read earlier, so we won't repeat those that were on the chart. And these are the state of Connecticut guidelines, and I think these are really, they've even become more important today, I think, than they were Friday. So the local education, we, we must have a plan to have all students in all districts return to schoolhouses for full-time instruction at the beginning of 2020, 2021. So long as public health data continues to support this model. This model will be supported with more intensive mitigation strategies and specific monitoring containment and class cancellation. In addition to full-time instruction, as indicated above, we must be prepared to modify the plan to support a partial reopening or to allow scaling back at a future date if the public health data changes. And I think this is important because these come straight from the state. And we must identify gaps and develop action plans for reopening that specifically address inclusion, equity, access for all learners with strategy and clearly defined action steps. So when we get to the scheduling component, and I'm going to say it now, and then I'm going to say it again, this has been really challenging because when this document first came out, it was really a local decision about where we are in the status. As of just last Friday, when I went home on Friday, the commissioner's office via our superintendent's organization had clarified that it may not be a local decision. In fact, they were, they said on Friday it wasn't in that all schools must return full-time. So even our high school where we know we're really challenged, and we're going to talk a little bit about that, just with the size of the building, the number of students in the building, trying to have any sort of social distancing and cohorting is almost impossible in high school, that the hybrid model that I'm putting forward tonight, as of late Friday night, was not, is not in compliance. And so I do have a, that question into the state, and we're waiting on the commissioner to actually answer that. If we don't feel like we can bring our students back and also follow the guidelines and requirements that they've given us to a safe standard, are we in non-compliance? Or are they going to have waivers for certain buildings and certain school districts? So next is the expectation for teachers and staff. And again, these are pretty basic that are, you'll find in most of the district plans. There is daily monitoring of their own health. And you'll see it'll be on the student side as well, wearing a mask at all times unless we're on a mask break, and there'll be some short breaks built in, especially for the students. Maintain social distancing, washing their hands. Again, these are all things I think most people are aware. To stay home and quarantine for 14 days if a member of the family has COVID, not just when they're positive, but the advice right now is that teacher would stay home if they have a member of their family. And down below is the student expectations. It's almost exactly the same. And again, one of the reasons I love doing the focus groups and getting questions like the question document that we put out Friday night is because people suggest really good things. And somebody pointed out, well, why does a student not have to quarantine for 14 days if somebody in their family is sick? So when you see the next document update, which is tomorrow, that'll be on there. It was just missed. So again, that's just one of those things that we're grateful for the input we're getting from the community. So this is our basic opening checklist, and this is where we'll be looking at, are we in low, moderate, or COVID-critical transmission? And that really does determine how we open. And right now, for the most part, we're considered to be in low, but we've been told we needed to watch through this week to see if there would be any spikes in Connecticut due to the July 4th. A lot of gatherings happened on July 4th, and again, we're watching that. We're looking at also the current indoor cohort status. And when they talk about cohort, for some of the people that may not have watched a lot of these meetings, it's really just about keeping small groups of our students and teachers together. So it's less, less risk around the building that you're coming in contact with somebody who has COVID. Right now, it's at 50 on indoor. We've been told that by September, it could be 100, 150, depending on what happens in the next few weeks. We still have several weeks before we're back to school. For our health-related input to decision-making, this is just letting everybody know who those people are down on the bottom. Scroll up just a little bit, Mike. Thanks. For the Greenwich Health Department, very, very important. Dr. Katie Noble is the medical consultant for the district. Mary Keller is head of our nursing, and she actually served on the state task force. We look at World Health Organization, the Connecticut Department of Health, the Center for Disease Control, and we've been told they will be updating their documents very soon. The American Academy of Pediatrics, and then the state guidance document, which is critical, the adapted, advance and achieve, because it does have things that are required, and you're going to see those throughout our document. So for transportation, we're really looking at, again, low, moderate, or critical. And it's up to a full bus load with masks, and that is what the state has said again for the requirement. The mask must cover the nose and the mouth, has to be on before the student can get on the bus. Now, again, this is what the state requires. We're going to really ask for our families to help and have more parents transport their children. We're hoping we can get that because if we load our buses with 50 students and they're sitting two and three to a seat, then going to school and doing any sort of social distancing or cohorting really doesn't carry the same impact that it would if we can keep our buses where we have some social distancing. And down below that, you'll find the protocols. And the protocols, again, are pretty stringent, and you know, providing the mask on all the buses if they forget to bring one. If you're the first student on the bus, you must go to the very back of the bus. That's a requirement. That's different. When you look at a bus like K5, generally, your younger students will ride in the front of the bus, and older students go in the back. When they exit the bus, you have to exit from the front seats first, and they also must sit with siblings. They encourage that. It's not a requirement, but we want families to encourage siblings to sit together. That's what CDC guidance actually says. And the mask must be worn at all times. However, if a student shows up at the bus stop, they forgot their mask, we have one we can give them. This guidance also talks about non-compliance. If a student gets on the bus and they just refuse to wear it, you can't obviously put them back out on the bus stop if their parents not there and drive off and leave them. So when they get to school, they work like they always would for any sort of non-compliance discipline issue on a bus, and they would talk to the principal, and the principal would call the parent. If it's a high school, or they would obviously talk to the housemasters or the deans, the assistant dean. So our food service status, looking at food service, whether that's low, moderate, or higher than that. This could be different at each building because if our cohort is 50, and they need six feet in between them, then some, some cafeterias would be able to hold that cohort and some may not. And this will come down to where's the safest place for students to eat. And I want to note, note again on this one, somebody had pointed out in one of their questions, which was very valid, that on low transmission risk, it says three to four feet, and that's, the state was pretty well saying three to four, but because they have their mask off in Greenwich, we would want it to be six feet. And that was, I'm glad they contributed that, so that you'll see that in the updated document. So they're being spread out even more so, and they can't be spread out where it's safe in the cafeteria, or the groupings are so small, you're starting lunch at, you know, 9:45 in the morning, and you're not finishing until 2:30. That doesn't work either. And that's what could also push us to be eating lunch in different spaces and places, including the classroom. If we go to COVID critical, just as a reminder for our families, we would still have lunches at all of our stops, like we're continuing through the summer, at all of our different drop-off points. The other thing to note is that the students who are on distance learning, just right down at the bottom of the document, they will still be able to pick up breakfast and lunch. And it will be updated tomorrow to say at any of the pickup locations, doesn't necessarily have to be the school where they are assigned, which is the way it has been since March. If you have a couple of children who are all staying home, they don't necessarily have to go to the elementary and the middle school. They can choose which site they want to pick up food, but that will be available for those families who are still, who opt for that remote option. These are all just the food service protocols, and I'm not going to read through every one of these. I think it's a lot of things that wouldn't shock you, training food service on food safety processes. Our food will be very- Our food will be very limited at the beginning because of the touch aspect. And because students don't line up, they come in and sit down. And you bring the lunch to the student so that they're not standing in lines. Again, to re emphasize social distancing. But our food service protocols will be very tight. And of course, we have state regulators that help us make sure we do what we need to do. Our outside recess and playgrounds will be staggered. Again, limited cohorts. They will wash and sanitize before and after their exposure outside. We are allowed by regulations for children to take their mask off when they're outside. But they'll have to be stored very carefully to make sure that they're not in contact with another student's mask. And it's all face, all face mask storage must not contain, contain plastic. And that's, that's how finite really the guidance gets from our health requirements. And we will be doing that for our children so that they do have that mask break when they go outside and young people as well. Facility and security. When you look at the low and the moderate, it's having multiple door and staggered entrances. And this is, this is a change for us in that generally we have utilized. You know, one, two, three points of entry because that's for safety and security. COVID now is requiring a different viewpoint, monitoring more doors. And making sure that we have multiple points of entry. And they're entering where they're likely to go straight to their classroom. Some of our buildings, they can actually open a classroom door and walk right in, right in the classroom. So that will be a change of procedure that we'll have to learn in the fall. Also the floor guidance mapping for directionality, just like you see in the grocery store. The mapping for restrooms will be there. We're also putting in the Plexi counters on offices. Essential face to face service providers will have that. And again, we're able to look a little bit at how our summer program is working. And you know, does the tabletop Plexi work well? Is it, is it what we really want to do? We are discouraging all of our water fountains from being used. And those who were watching this document over the last couple of weeks, it used to say it was to shut it off. And use the water bottles. Now looking at the CDC current guidance, it's the drinking fountain should be cleaned and sanitized. But everyone is encouraged not to use them. But obviously if it was an emergency, somebody really needed to drink water, it's to keep it open. The tissue grabs are available outside of the restrooms. Inside the restrooms, we've, we're changing to those no, no touch paper towel dispensers. Our district had most of ours that way already. But so they don't have to actually touch anything. They grab the paper towel, the next paper towel pops out. Hand sanitizer will be available in all of our classrooms. The wipes will be available in our classrooms. Every building will be sanitized throughout the day. Door handles, high touch surfaces. Every night the building gets disinfected. We have hand sanitizing available at those main points of entry and exit. And safe touch methods for vending machines and lunch numbers. And drop off zones for lost, forgotten and found items have to be outside the physical building. That is a change for us. So we don't have a lot of people coming in and dropping stuff off. And if we have any school stores, they obviously have to wear gloves and mask for the cellar. That floors will be mapped for those areas. Our signage is similar and it is the same, sorry, in every restroom across the district. And this is the CDC signage. And on the next page, you'll see it's also in Spanish. Making sure we have multiple languages available for children and students. This is just how to manage COVID when they're at home. Go ahead, yeah. Actually, Mike, can you go back one please? Yeah, I think it, it's lost part of the document. Christina said it did it to her this weekend. After page 14, it's, there should be 15. Might just give you one minute and see if we reload it.
Alternatively, Mike, you could probably pull it from the, the Greenwich Schools webpage. It's linked off of the committee page. All right, Tony, he's got it for you.
Okay, go back one more so I can just double check where you are. Sorry. Okay, that's it. So with the classroom spaces, again, we're still on facilities. Most of these are requirements, they're set up to minimize social distancing. If the desks are available, it's, it's six feet apart when feasible. And the state has said three to six feet. If desks are available, they try to get them in the same direction. If tables are utilized, sitting only on one side of the table. Minimizing high touch supplies and materials, which does have a cost when we look at things like art supplies. Floor mapping for a six foot teacher zone, kind of that safety zone at the front of the room. And if we need clear blockers or Plexi for tabletop surfaces. When we look at building use, this is a big one. Building inside spaces will not be rented if we're in phase one or two. This has been updated a little bit. And again, that's on this document that you're looking at, this was where we were last Thursday. Some of this was updated for, for tonight. Underneath that one, it actually says gym and the performing arts center. Will only be rented with a COVID impact fee upfront to pay for labor to disinfect the space after each event. And this is subject to change at any point in time. We know that renting our buildings is huge and especially our high school gyms and the pack. But we must be able to charge again, a fee that's going to pay for the cleaning. Otherwise, we can't get the buildings ready for the next day of instruction. And space will be available for events which are directly linked to instructional need. And again, this came out of our questions last week. So you don't see it on this document because Mike had to change. The most updated version, ACT, SAT scheduled testing, those are critical need. So of course we would still allow facility usage and we have to plan for the cleaning after. Before and after care can operate on their usual times with social distancing if we're in phase one. And they, we may have to modify space or time if, if we move to phase two. For visitors in the building, it limits volunteers and visitors to essential. And for our fire drills conducted by individual classrooms, not an entire school. Unless we get direction from the Connecticut State Department of Education. Or the state fire marshal makes us do it in a different way. But we don't want students rushing out of the building in two or three minutes. And you know, you're on top of each other and you're not, you don't have any social distancing. So our drills will have to change. Lockdown drills will not be conducted as the whole classroom or school, generally an entire school locks down. We will, we're going to practice when we've discussed this is really looking at. This document that you're looking at says teacher demonstration only. We've updated that where they will actually do it by class. And the kids will crouch down by their desk. And the teacher will point out where the safe zone in the room would be. And that was guidance we got from last Thursday until tonight. Again, I believe it was from our local fire marshal. Arrival and dismissal. That's just usually the assigned points of entry for social distancing. Again, it's going to be by building needs and how many entrances they have when we can get people in and out. All of our communications, we must have our compliance liaison. We are doing weekly communications at the height of COVID. We had to do even more, keeping everything updated. We also have to have tutorials for families and staff. And when you look at those boxes that are indented, social distancing, hand washing, face coverings, those are required. And so we're working on short videos. There are some already that have been already done. The CDC has a lot of great things out there and several of the hospitals have done some great videos that we'll be able to use as well. And then working with human resource to make sure all substitutes are also prepared to see all of the tutorials. We had the home monitoring, the daily self, self checklist. This is for teachers and for families. When this document initially came out, you'll notice at the bottom, there's a signature page. It's no longer required, so it will be taken off. And that's because it's, this is a self check at home. And they don't have to actually submit it to the district. There's an expectation that everybody is, you know, monitoring their own symptoms and taking temperatures and, and helping the district. And everybody stays safe. And as along with that monitoring are the things that they can do to manage if they are having some symptoms at home. Again, this is straight from the CDC. Go ahead, Mike. On the teaching and learning aspect, this is looking at the achievement data. And making sure that we are follows, following that priority to not only continue to close the achievement gap. You know, and personalizing our learning, but also our SEL and all of those things that are so important. And we have required professional development. So one of the things that's on the calendar tonight is our calendar adjustment because we need more time. We not only are going to have to teach children and staff new protocols on what exit do you use? How do you enter the building? But the social distancing requirements, the hand washing and hand sanitizer. We literally have to check off that we've gone through these. The disinfecting of surfaces, especially for those related service providers that work with children. Some of them one-on-one or in small groups have to disinfect between every group, which is what we're actually doing this summer. And then we also have other site specific professional development, which I, which I was just mentioning. And those are the things at the bottom of that sheet. How do, how do we minimize high touch in the classroom? Shared resources and materials like calculators, pencils, drawing tools. Computer keyboards must be cleaned if they're sharing any sort of computer. So all of those protocols have to be in place when school starts. And our staff and students will have to understand how that looks different than it, than it did in the past. Professional development, these are just some of the professional development. Again, these are checklists for us utilizing Google meets for live face to face teaching. Making sure everybody really has a good grasp on that platform. Using Google Classroom and Schoology, our Linkit platform, instructional microphones, teaching synchronous and asynchronous. What's the good balance with that? Looking at our school schedule and again, we put some out, this was in our family note on Friday. Really talking about what, what does the schedule look like as of today? And again, this whole document's in draft and things can change. And right now we're looking at full entry for K5. And we are trying to maximize our social distancing, cohorting, staggered arrivals. That means different doors are coming in at different spots. We will be asking again, families to help us with the bus travel, trying to reduce grouping sizes. It helps a little bit on and at the elementary level because of the out program. You do have a number of students that aren't in actually the home base for segments of the day. So that's helping in that scheduling aspect and spreading out across the building. Having to utilize spaces differently, which is another thing the state has asked us to do. And working to be under that 20 class size. Again, and looking at square footage of the rooms where classes are located. And middle school, very similar. Looking at the full reentry, trying to make sure we're between the cohort model that 50 and 100 on a team. And that'll depend what, what we say with a cohort, rather than all 100 students can mix. Will depend on where the state says we are in cohorting for indoor and modifying the schedule. So the middle school principals are all working together and the schedule will look a little bit different. Especially in how students go to electives. And how we make that work to have minimal movement around the building and try to keep these cohorts together. And then the new electives to team electives. And high school is where it's, it's been a challenge looking at the hybrid schedule. No more than 50% of the students at one time. Face to face instruction, setting up remote learning days. And as far as the actual schedule, we still have a lot of work to do on that. And I know there's a lot of discussion just from the questions that I have seen. On whether that would be, you know, a student's in for two days or you're alternating or they're in for four days. And when we look at the high school schedule, I know some of you will probably have questions. From the, from the input groups this week, the focus groups. That the teachers were advocating for having one group of students, half of the high school in on a Monday, Tuesday. Doing remote learning on a Wednesday, which you've seen this model around the country with a deep cleaning. So they're meeting with all of their kids, Thursday, Friday is the next group. And what that would do is mean you'd have the same group in for two days. They would not physically be present Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So you'd have five days to be able to look at and develop, you know, to look at symptoms and that sort of thing. So that is a model again, that was suggested in our focus groups over the last, over the last week. Behind that, what you'll see is just, we are starting on the next page, Mike. Oh, it probably didn't have it. So the next page, actually on the document, it probably, if it opens up on board docs. It was the, it's the estimated known financial impacts. And those are where we're starting to build that list. Obviously, our finance team has been so busy closing out the year that we're processing all of this. But we want to make sure we put the numbers on here, you know, they're accurate. But just to give you an idea, like sneeze guards, $30,000 just for those. Or is expected, it says plus because it could be more. Go ahead and go down a little bit. And on the mask, by the way, on the top, you saw the 17,000. That's just for food service alone. And I think just to kind of know the magnitude, they have to have a new mask every single day. And then you start looking at like facilities, that's 10,000 just for facilities staff. So we have a lot more of just the PPE equipment that, that you'll see on this document as it gets built out. And then down on the bottom with the floor tape and arrows and dots and hand sanitizer. All of these things that we would not normally be purchasing. Go ahead and go down just a little bit more. And then if you look at, we're requesting 13 temporary non-certified staff. One of the questions people have had is who's going to help disinfect doorknobs? And who's going to make sure that the restrooms are not, that they do have the tissue that students grab? So they don't have to touch the handle. And it does, it's going to take additional people. So this just gives you a cost, an estimate 280,000 just for 13 temporary workers. And we know just below that, we need probably at least 3.0 for temporary cohorting teachers. And that's another 225. So the 850,000 in CARES money that, that Greenwich will get. Keep in mind, part of that will go to private schools. And they have not been able to answer that yet. And they gave us an answer and then late, I believe it was Friday, they pulled back again. So they haven't even opened that system. But out of that 850, we may only get 600, 650. And you can see just by looking at a few of these numbers, it would be gone with two or three items on this list. So it is a challenge. Go ahead, Mike, and just scroll all the way to the end. And this was just letting people know what sneeze guards are. The Plexiglas that sit on desks, much like you see in other places. And just again, the masks that are required. So I'm going to stop there because that is the draft plan. There's a tremendous amount of information, obviously. Every single department has to be engaged in this process. And it is complex. And I think that we all, we all recognize that. And we're doing everything we can to be as prepared for September. And following the state guidance who's telling us that we must open our doors full time, five days a week for instruction. So I'll take questions, I think.
Thank you, Tony. This is Peter Burns. And I want to thank the task force members. I know they've had five very public meetings, those meetings, the videos from them, the materials used are all posted on the Greenwich Schools website. If you haven't looked at them, I know a lot of work has gone on between the meetings to continue to do that. Just, just perspective. I mean, this is a flexible framework, right? I don't know that you could have a definitive plan today for reopening around Labor Day. When the world is shifting under our feet. I mean, this is iterative, it's based on where we are today. Their state mandates, you know, right now those are non-negotiable. Those could change. Just today, New York issued guidance that looks very, very different than what Connecticut issued. And quite frankly, I think we ought to take a really close, hard look at it. Two of the largest school districts in California decided to go completely remote. You know, they, they're at a different number than we are now. And honestly, it's where we, where we end up, where the community is, the closer we get to school. That'll really guide what we, what we need to do. Also today, the Connecticut Department issued a 12 page summary of some of the things that they've put out so far. Hong Kong has basically halted their reopening. There were two stories in the, there's a story in the New York Times and a story in the Washington Post. Over the weekend about global entries. And you know, it's, it sort of fits and starts. And then we're waiting on the CDC guidance, right? So I just, I feel like this is a starting point, not an ending point. I know I said it, you know, when we got to the end of our regular board meetings that we're going to need to meet more. But I really believe we're going to need to meet more. You're going to, your committee is going to be working. I think the board's going to continue to need to be part of the conversation. And as that, at some point, board members, we need to have a discussion about what our role is. Officially, the word is we do not need to approve the plan. I double checked that with, with Tom Mooney, who concurred in that. I double-checked that with, with Tom Mooney, who concurred in that. The state basically is looking for the administration to put the plan in. Our role, you know, is, is about discussion, making sure there's involvement in the planning process. Having these meetings tonight and on Thursday, making sure we're, we're asking questions, getting them answered, making sure this is consistent with where we need to go. And I think we're going to need to continue that level of engagement. But you know, obviously people have a different point of view. We can talk about that. Tony, one of the areas I wanted to, to ask you about though, was the re-entry for Greenwich High School. Obviously you said, you know, that the way this is, this is formed right now, it's two days on for Team A, three days out of the building. And then back on next week and Team B would come in three days this week, two days next week. You know, it's sort of contrary to some of the science that's out there. I know it's contrary to what my company is doing, which is four days on. Nobody in on that either Friday or Monday. So you've got a three-day weekend to clean the building, let things sit for a while. And then the other team is on four days the following week and you rotate through. So I guess I'm a little, a little curious as to how you landed on the two-three. The other thing I know that you just said is that the state said basically it must be full onsite. So I guess in the eyes of the state right now, two, three or four, four doesn't really matter.
That's correct. To be in compliance right now, it's five days a week, every day, everybody is back at the high school. And again, we just, we just heard that last Friday. And so we'll see where, if they haven't really put anything out official because they went through the CAPS organization. But I'm, I have asked that question and I'm hoping to get an official answer, one way or the other. We haven't really come, come to a decision. Obviously, again, this is draft. Originally, originally we were thinking A, B. So if you think of the high school broken into two groups, A and B. And A was in on Monday and B was in on Tuesday. But we have, I think, grown since then over the last month, really, couple of weeks. And our high school staff were suggesting that it be AA on Monday, Monday. So it's the same group of students. And then on Wednesday, everybody is at home, you're disinfecting. And the B group would be in on Thursday, Friday. So what that does is you, if you have the A group in on Monday, Tuesday, they are not back again until the next Monday, Tuesday. So they're still with their teacher and learning though on Wednesday. So you're not, you don't run the same risk that kids are at home, just totally alone. We're trying to balance not only social, emotional, we're trying to balance a quality curriculum and instruction, health and safety. And you know, I know the committee, we've said this a lot, a lot of times these things are in contradictory to one another. And there's, there are concerns about having high school students for a full week at home. And especially with parents that could be at work. And is that really the best model instructionally to have students on for four days or five days? Because they are, they are teenagers and teenagers, you know, are going to make different choices than what adults at work will make. And we don't want to find that our kids are down at the beach and, you know, getting into dangerous situations because they're not in school all week. So we've tried to balance that along with what, what's the best health and safety way to get half of our kids back in.
Yes, Tony, just a follow-up to that. So the days the kids are not in the building, they're still going to get live instruction?
They're still, they're still going to get instruction and right now we're trying to figure out. We, the high school, if you ask the high school staff, we really would like to do the streaming aspect so that they still are in with the same class and it's streaming. We've tested all of our system, we know from, and when I say streaming, it means they're watching the teacher. There's not a great like camera system that necessarily moves around, it's not as engaging. But we do believe that we, the system can do it. And so right now we're trying to, we're really trying to narrow down what is the right equipment and we're going to have to invest in the equipment. We're testing lots of things right now to find out, it's, and especially even the sound quality. And again, that came up this week with our special education parents. If you're going to do that, you also have to have good sound quality.
Thank you. Ms. Kelly. Joe, you're muted.
I knew I forgot something.
There you go.
Here. Hey, Tony, how's that summer vacation going?
Oh, boy. Great.
You've never done something like this before, I'm sure. So thank you for all the work everybody's doing here. And I'm sure we'll get there, we'll get through this trouble. My questions will be short and they're related to oftentimes I ask similar questions about what the other guy is doing. Do we have any school reopening plans from our, our other districts? That would be similar to our districts that we can get a look at to make sure that if our community thinks we might not be planning for everything, we can look at the other guy's plans and make sure we learn from them as well. So if you can call your superintendent friends from some of our neighbors and, and get a load of their, their reopening plan. I'd certainly like to take a look at those. I know a lot of this stuff, or my question, that's more of a statement. The question I have is the documents or what you have just gone over, how much of this is state stuff? Basically, you'll find this on everyone else's reopening plan and how much is created and drafted and invented by you and your staff?
Well, first of all, for this plan, I would say most of it is what's required from the state. Because this plan doesn't actually even get an approval at the state level, which is really odd. We just have to turn it in. So we're really doing it from our perspective. That's why it's kind of like a checklist. So we don't miss anything. And it's for us to make sure we've kind of crossed the T and dotted the I. All of the districts, there are certain components we must have. We must plan for the three, full entry, hybrid and full distance learning. You must show that you're doing that. And then there are things like the mask wearing that must be in your plan. All of those are, the most of those have the blue numbers after them in our plan. Where we, where we're doing some things that you, you know, may not be required. It's just because we felt like in our buildings, it's a good safety requirement to have. But those are, those are the items that are guidance and guidance, some of them you do and some of that, some of them they don't because they don't fit our, our school district. But we all look very, very similar. Actually, the superintendents of Fairfield County meet every Friday. We are all sharing what's going on and it's really different. We probably look closest to Danbury because it's a high school of 3,000. So they're having the same challenge that we are. And when they were discussing this, I believe last Friday, you know, Danbury came up and that they may be a challenge because they have 3,000. Which, you know, we're another, another high school that's very similar to that. So it's a little bit different if you only have three buildings, for instance. And you have ample space, you've built a new school and you built for growth, you have a lot of extra rooms. We're all in a little bit different situation, but the plans are very similar.
Great. Thanks for that answer. So a lot of this stuff is brand, well, all of this stuff is all brand new for every superintendent and every district in the state. Possibly, I guess we could say the entire country. So it's certainly interesting to watch how we develop it. I'm glad you guys are communicating with, sharing the knowledge that everybody shares throughout the state and as far as the country. And Mr. Bernstein making reference to some things that are happening internationally as well, certainly is very helpful. So please let us know how we can help because this is all brand new and, and contact us when you have something and let me. I'd just like to take a quick look at somebody else's school reopening plan. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, Ms. Stone.
Hi, Tony. Hi, everyone. Thank you, first of all, this, and I'm really happy you went through it because obviously I read it, but it was really important for you to sort of walk us through everything. And for all 364 people here who do it, that was very helpful. This is, and rightly, this is getting a lot of focus in our community and of course, in, in the country. This is very important stuff. We, and I think everyone needs to be reminded, we have 9,000 students, more than 9,000 students across 15 buildings. So we are a big district and this is the first time we're really having a substantive conversation on the topic. So I think we, it's a great time for our community to keep giving us feedback. We have to keep having this conversation. This is going to be going on for a long time. I mean, I think about this, this is a moving target, right? So based on what we know about the virus, the state guidelines are changing, the CDC guidelines are constantly changing. So I think the key is that we need to remain flexible. And very clearly, the team has been doing that and we're willing to do that. And to keep soliciting parent input. I, you know, I know that we have, like I said, over 360 people on it. Let's keep talking, let's keep getting their feedback. I love that you're meeting with PTAC. We have to just try to optimize a very difficult situation and we're not going to please everyone, but we're going to do our best, right? And I think it's important that we recognize how, that for our kids, we would certainly like them to be back in school. And for their academic and their social, emotional wellbeing. But we need to obviously constantly be balancing, balancing that with the health concerns. So what can we be doing? I like how you sort of put that, Joe. In fact, today Jill Ovelander called me and she said, how can the town help? One of the things we're hearing about tonight is the high school, we don't have enough space. So can the town help us find additional space? I want to talk about that. Do we have Western Civic Center? I know, what else? I mean, I know, I think you mentioned you looked at an academy, any of the town-owned properties? Are there things we can do? I know that there will be hurdles. But can we be creative here and really partner with our town and find a way to sort of solve at least the high school issue? If everything else at least currently seems to be solved, that would be, that would be great.
Yeah, we, we started, when we were first exploring this, Dr. Caribilla and I were looking at off-site. You know, is that something we were going to need? We thought at first it would be for middle school. We are feeling more confident about middle school, obviously now. But there, there is a, a private school that was closing. We went and looked at the property. But it would be hard-pressed to get even upwards of 400 students there. We also, I did have a conversation with Bobby Walker, who was still running, you know, the Boys and Girls Club. But again, if we wanted to take, for instance, freshmen and split them up all over the place. But that seemed like it would be pretty challenging for such a major transition to high school for students. And it's very difficult to take upper grades based on the equipment and what they need, you know, in a high school. A science high school lab, we don't find at Boys and Girls Club or we don't find, you know, at other spaces. So certainly we could look at it. I know that when we were looking even at one of the places, you know, it was about $24 a square foot. And I was calculating that at about two and a half million dollars to relocate, you know, 300-ish students. So that just gives you an idea of kind of numerically where it was as well. And then we were trying to figure out, how do you get enough space? And looking at our freshman class, for instance, again, because the high school's large, it's 700 students. So if you're going to, if you're going to rent somewhere or relocate somewhere, you wouldn't want to just do half. Because then you're right back to what we're already doing anyway, if it's not large enough for 700. So we've gone through that thought process and I'm certainly happy for the board to ask us to do, you know, some more. And there, you know, I certainly don't know Greenwich, after only being here a year, people may be sitting out there thinking, I know exactly where 700 students can go. We'd love to hear from you if that's the case.
All right. Well, I'm happy it's been explored, but yeah, let's keep the conversations going because to the extent the town can help us in any way. Financially, of course, but also with space would be great. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
All right, Ms. Hirsch.
Hi, thank you for sharing some of the survey data with us this evening, Tony. I look forward to delving into that a little bit further tomorrow's, you know, committee meeting. I have a ton of questions, some of which I can just hold off and put forward tomorrow. But two of the areas I really didn't see in this document, and I'm hoping that we're going to see going forward. Are any, I didn't see any mentions of a plan to address special education, students with IEPs, 504s of learning differences. Or those who receive special education services. So I wanted to just know how and when we'll be adding details to address the needs of those students. Likewise, I didn't see details in there for anything regarding pre-K. So I just didn't know when we might be able to see some of those things put forward.
Yeah, preschool is really part of that whole K5 and it really should say pre-K if it doesn't say it on there. I thought we had actually, I had corrected that. So pre-K is, it's, their numbers are already small. Now, I'm not saying that makes it easy, you know, trying to require masks with preschoolers is a totally different challenge. But they're in with that K5. As far as special education, we talk about unique learners and kind of how we're going to be able to provide those services. The state was going to send out some more information. And again, I don't know when that's going to come. They referenced it a little bit in the document that came out this afternoon, but it wasn't very helpful. But we certainly can enhance the section about unique learners in our, in our document.
I was going to say, you know, I, I know I've read all the other documents and things that have come out and been on countless meetings. Joe, I've read plans or preliminary plans from across the state and across the country. So I can certainly share some of that too with you. You know, one of the other big areas that I was hoping that we could address, at least going forward, is the social, emotional. The state has added requirements for social, emotional education and support. I'm really concerned that there's been increases in behavioral issues, anxiety, all sorts of things associated with the trauma of school being closed so quickly last year. Many students became disengaged with their learning. Having a student who's doing our summer school program, I can certainly say she is significantly more engaged with the live lessons that are happening, which I think is fantastic. But I was wondering when we're going to see a plan sort of address the social, emotional needs of both of our staff and our students. I think the staff also will really need that additional support. I wanted to know sort of how we're going to address those needs and if we need additional social workers or any, any other support to help in that area.
You know, we still have more work to do. The, the components of the plan, keep in mind, this plan is not everything that we're doing. It's the plan that's required to go to the state. So there, there are things that are going to go deeper than what this plan is going to show. Really, if we tried to go into, we could make this document probably 300 pages. But we're trying to just actually make it a very usable plan for us that goes to the state. Social, emotional, we were talking about that on our phone call. We had, gosh, I think it was this morning, all my days are already running together. And with the administrators and, you know, there's the ruler program that a lot of districts are training on this summer to give teacher skill set a little bit deeper. And we have to really nail that down and what is the skill set we're going to provide for the teachers to, to help them with some of our kids who have been through trauma. And I'm so glad you mentioned the staff. And I think that's one thing that I'm, I am really seeing by a lot of the, you know, the emails that I receive and questions from staff. They are, they are generally afraid and you're hearing that around the country. And I think it's why some states, especially where they're having very high, where they're spiking right now and they're going back in the next three weeks. There's a lot of anxiety and it, it would obviously impact teachers' ability to teach as well if we want them to, if they're nervous and scared about going to work. So that has to be in the forefront of our minds as well. And what sort of, you know, the focus groups, even just getting teachers an opportunity to talk about, how can we make things, how can we make it a better environment for you? So it's not so scary. And I think we need to continue to do a lot more of that as well.
So thank you for that. And I just will point out, I know that one of the other main components of the plan that you didn't specifically detail is the requirements for major communication plans to go forward. So parents are, and staff are in the know. I know you and I have discussed masks as it's a state requirement. And the sooner we make sure that all of our parents, especially those with the younger students are aware that this is a state requirement. They can start to go out. I know we're putting together some, some how-to videos for them. But just they need to start to work with some of their students to sort of help them learn to wear their masks for a longer time and build up tolerance for wearing them. Because I know that it is required on our buses, it'll be required in our classrooms. And I know we're still waiting for some more granular detail from the state on mask breaks and, and other details. But I just wanted to mention, I know that that is something that you guys are working on for those who are concerned.
Absolutely.
I may have some other questions later, but I'll, I'll hand the mic over to someone else.
Thank you. Ms. Olson.
Took me a minute to unmute. Thank you, Tony, so much for all of this. And Karen Hirsch, I know has done a lot of homework on this as well, and the entire team. And thank you for walking us through it. I found that very helpful. I have a couple of questions. First, I'll piggyback on the masks that Ms. Hirsch was just mentioning. So, you know, they're obviously a requirement by law, nose and mouth covering. I have a couple of questions. First off, if, if a, is there, do we have in place some sort of consequence for people not wearing a mask? I know that there's times in middle school, high school, very likely kids might take their mask off. Almost, almost the way a teacher ends up being a police officer, put your cell phone away, put your cell phone away. I don't think it should be the teacher's responsibility to be reminding the kids masks on, masks on, masks on, toting themselves at risk in that process. So I want to know, is there some sort of consequence in place for students that take their mask off or don't wear them properly? Maybe students that don't keep their nose in addition with their mouth covered. Is there, I guess that's my first question. I'll let you respond to that first.
Yeah, I mean, it is a tough one because obviously we're going to have some students who may have health or medical and that's a totally different ballgame. We just got legal guidance on this last week, probably in the middle of the week. Because I'm trying to understand, you know, what is our obligation since it's a requirement? And it is a health and safety. It's looked at from a health and safety standpoint. So we definitely have to treat it as though a student is being non-compliant, just like you would if they didn't put their cell phone away. What does your discipline policy say? Phone call home to the parent, is it, you know, in-school suspension? Is it out-of-school suspension? It will be handled just like any other non-compliance, simply because we have to by law. Otherwise, we open ourselves up to liability for not enforcing. The law is what they've asked us to do from a health and safety standpoint.
And I do realize that some people will go to their pediatrician or will have asthma or other things. I'm looking at the point of the teacher. Should a teacher have a, you know, be subjected to a classroom with students without masks just because somebody was able to get a note from a doctor? So I'm, I'm, and as you showed in the, in the statistics and that, just from the research and just from the data that the, when we surveyed teachers, there's a lot of discomfort about, around this. So I think it's really an important thing to look at. I had one other question also. I know you talked about the, the option, the alternative available to families of full remote learning. Is that available to families for any reason? Like, can any family basically opt into that, whether or not there's a physical or mental health challenge? Just if the family doesn't feel comfortable, is that a possibility?
Yes, it's anybody that wants to, and that's a requirement in our plan. So, and that's, that'll be part of the challenge of, you know, in the next few weeks. Because we have to be so nimble and flexible, how many families really are going to opt out? And how many teachers do we have to match up with those students who are also teaching the distance classes? So that in itself, it's like running almost a whole nother school, another small school. And it, and they can, and they can actually opt out and opt back in. So if the first month of school, they decided we want to come back, we can have a one- or two-week requirement, so that we could get a schedule built and try to figure out where they could go. But they can come in and out all year long by law.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Ms. Downey.
Tony, thank you. This is, I think everyone would agree, a monumental, and I'm sure at times overwhelming task. And with an evolving situation, none too easy. So we appreciate all the time and effort you're putting, have put, putting and going to put in. And I also realizing that I think, based on your survey data, it's clear we're never going to make everyone happy, but we're going to do our best. And I think that, that, that people need to really kind of come back to that and remember that the goal is everyone's trying to do what's best for our students and our staff and our families. And it is a little bit of a guessing game, given the information which keeps changing. And some of my questions have been answered. I'm going to kind of hop around, because I have a couple of miscellaneous questions. But I want to follow up on what Megan just talked about, on the notion of distance learners opting in and out. How is that going to affect, like, you have someone who says, okay, I'm going to do distance learning. A couple of weeks into school or whatever, they say, okay, I know I want to come live. How, you know, how are we going to manage that if that starts throwing our class size numbers off? Do you, I mean, and I know you don't have necessarily these logistics in mind, but I, I think we have to be cognizant of that possibility and prepare for that.
And it is, it is really tricky, because when this happened last spring overseas, and there were some, some school districts that had shared that, that 20%, 25% that opted out the first week or two, within the first five to six weeks, they were almost back to 100%. So that, and, and I don't know that it will be that way for us, you know, but it's, it, it's going to be challenging. We could have a distance teacher who starts with 24 kids, and, you know, a month later has 10. And that's just the reality. We just, and we have to, again, we have to allow it. So that's part of the requirements.
Okay, a couple of other like nuts and boltsies. Masks and PPE. I know your chart didn't have those in, but it would seem to me you started hearing about shortages around the country. Have we ordered anything? What steps have we taken to kind of make some progress, to be sure? Because it's now July 13th, you know, we're six to, less than eight weeks away from the start of school to, to be able to have at least a stash on hand when school starts.
Yeah, we, we have a good supply on hand right now, but we need to do another order. And even as of, right before summer school started, we had our order we thought was going to ship the next day, and they pulled it all away and sent it to Florida, South Carolina. So we are going to, we could be very well faced with that. I mean, as of today, I think it was 39 states that are all spiking. And if we are not spiking in Connecticut, it's, it is, it's likely they may not ship to Connecticut. And that was part of what actually closed schools, you know, last March and April. Another reason why you couldn't reopen is there was no PPE equipment for custodian maintenance. And so that absolutely could happen again for supply and demand.
And along those lines, I think, you know, obviously, the priority has to be getting this done and into the state. But I do think communication to parents, along the lines of what Karen was saying about masks, or to be, to the extent, parents need to be purchasing things. For example, a stockpile of masks. If, if the determination is made, you have to have, you know, I know there used to be a lot of communal things in elementary school, like the crayons and the markers. And, and I, and I think communication to parents about what they need to be purchasing as early as possible would be supremely helpful, and I think most parents would appreciate that. Along the purchasing lines, technology, you were talking about things to do distance learning. What, if you think there's equipment that we're going to need to purchase in order to do the distance learning, I think to the extent, we, again, we can figure that out sooner rather than later, if we need to go in and ask the BET or the RTM for more money. Because that's the kind of stuff that, you know, we're hopeful that they would support. So I think that would be great. And then I want to go back to the beginning, which, about your survey, which was very interesting. Something just kind of came back noteworthy. Did, we, we conducted the survey in Spanish, is that correct, as well as English?
Yes.
Okay. And do we have how many, what percentage of the Spanish responses we had?
I don't have that actually tonight, but I can certainly ask Jen Lau to look at that for us.
Because I mean, like, you know, just not, you know, because our Title I's could, because of that quirky data you talked about in our Title I schools, I think I'd like to see what the response rate was in those schools, given that, because that they were kind of, not outliers, but the three of them kind of had similar response rates, which didn't necessarily align with a lot of the other schools. I think it's worthy of looking into on a more detailed basis. And, and all the information that you gave, I assume we're going to get that, it's going to be posted. What, the PowerPoint you did, we're going to post that onto Board Docs, so that we can all kind of dissect the numbers a little bit more?
Yeah, usually Mike gets it posted really quickly, by tomorrow, I'd say, for sure.
So, and I think that was it, unless I think of anything else. Thank you, thank you.
All right, Ms. Kowalski.
Sure. So I think the document that you walked through obviously is going to be submitted to the state and probably meets their expectations of what we need to put in. My questions go along the lines of more on the, the education component and how that's going to be structured going into this new year. So there's, so for example, if we talk about, we have to come up with a distance learning plan, is there a special task force that you have for distance learning? And what that looks like, and what standards are going to be set, and how that's going to actually operate and run? So for example, will a teacher hat be required to provide how many hours of content on a daily basis? Will it, which subjects were going to be taught on a distance learning component? And I think this is really important, given that the current scenario, one provides for students that can opt out from a, and take distance learning and not come in. And also the high school, there is a proposal that you're working on for a 50/50 split. So I'm just curious as to how that's going to work when you have, are they, you know, are these distance learners going to be actually able to join the classroom and watch the teacher live? And what, how is this going to be structured?
Yeah, it's really two different components. At the high school, what we're exploring right now is when the student's not physically present, because it's 50 and 50, they're actually streaming. So they can see inside the classroom and see the actual teacher teaching. The distance learning school is totally separate. And again, that's a requirement that we offer that, where a family can say, I want total distance learning. So they, if it's a second grade teacher, that teacher is teaching a distance learning classroom with, with students who are all enrolled from around the district in the second grade distance learning environment. And so that teacher is a total online teacher. It's not a teacher who's face-to-face and then trying to do a little bit of online. That's a second grade teacher who is now a distance learning teacher. And the schedule looks very similar to what you would find on a regular school schedule with the 50/50 synchronous and asynchronous. And, you know, Anne or Mark, feel free to jump in. They're working very hard right now on just even the summer school components and what that looks like, and getting good feedback and visiting classrooms to make sure that it's going well. And as a matter of fact, one of the, the feedback pieces, I think, from early, early childhood this week was, we need to be sure we have a little bit more teacher video, not as much teacher live, because having 24 little ones sit on the screen all day is, was not as effective from their point of view as those teachers who were mixing it up. You have some that are, you know, live as in Google Meets, like we're doing right now. And then some that were doing the video of themselves, so that they could watch it, re-watch it, and actually be able to have a little more flexibility. But Anne or Mark, feel free, do you want to chime in?
Yeah, Dr. Jones, thanks. What I would simply say is the focus groups have been extremely helpful in letting us take a deeper dive into what was successful this past spring. But more importantly, what wasn't successful? And what steps we need to do now to remediate it for the fall? And I break those down into different categories. Obviously, technology, the tools that are necessary for the teachers to be successful needs to be addressed, and we're working on that. You talked a little bit earlier about making sure that the, the district was robust enough to carry live streaming throughout all of our schools simultaneously. And Michael could certainly talk to the fact that we passed with flying colors. I think, you know, critical hurdles have to be addressed now to make sure that we're not getting in September, should we have to pivot to distance learning, these issues arising. What we want to do is make sure that we go back and look at all the lessons that were learned and avoid repeating any of the mistakes. So for example, we understand that there are families who are asking us to have a set schedule. And a set schedule is critical, because it allows you to design a live instruction. It allows kids to become routinized into the daily, daily agenda. It allows the teacher to push out content, allows them to then follow up with office hours, so that students can have timely and effective feedback. The remote learning school is fascinating in that we're building a brand-new school we've never had before, and there's an incredible number of challenges that we're going to have to deal with. The fact that you might have a, a teacher who is designated for that assignment, teaching students from 11 different elementary schools, is certainly something that we're going to have to work through the challenges for. So, you know, as we, as we evolve in our understanding of what's expected from the state, this is a lot like bobbing for apples. You see the targets in the water, and you think you're hitting it, and then the targets are moving. You know, as we move forward in the next few weeks, we're really going to have to solidify what our plan is based on the best guidance that we have from the state.
Yeah, on that, on that point, look, I think, you know, Tony had mentioned something about this document could be 300 pages. I think what would benefit the community, and certainly, I think, benefit the board members is if, you know, I don't need 300 pages, but to have a more detailed understanding of what the, the education component looks like for your distance learning, and the 50/50 component on what, what this is going to be structured like. Because worst-case scenario is, we enter into schools in September, and all of a sudden, by September 15th, we're already on, you know, we're back into distance learning again remotely. And are we going to be ready? Is it going to be a situation where we have all of those tools in place? And I look at the fact that we had eight weeks, roughly eight weeks until the school starts again. And I think, you know, obviously, to Christina's point, if there are things that need to be purchased in order to make, to get that up and running, we should be doing that now. And I think just understanding better about how this process is going to work would, would be better and would be helpful for, from a communication standpoint. But on the point of, you know, for example, going back to the teachers, teachers' issues on how they felt, and I wrote those numbers down, that cert, there was 43% roughly felt that they were not comfortable in returning to schools if the current status of the world has not changed. How are we going to address that from a potential, from a teacher shortage component? Does this mean that they're not going to come to the classroom? Does this mean they just feel uncomfortable? What are our expectations there in understanding how many teachers are planning to show up in September to teach?
If, yeah, if I might, I think not feeling comfortable is not so much a matter of, I'm not going to show up to work, because teachers have so many of the same challenges that everybody else does. I mean, they're, they're humans, they have families, they have all of, you know, they're in, just like any other profession. And it, what it means is that out of that 43%, there may be some who do have medical reasons where they don't come back. There may be some who choose to retire. But a vast majority of them are probably going to feel like they, they have to come back, because they have to for their families, or just for pay off their college loans, or whatever their situation is. And our goal is really, how can we get that 43% to feel more comfortable about coming back? Because we're going to, you know, put in the safety and, and security pieces that make them feel better about returning. So that's, you know, it's, it's really about getting them to a better space and understanding what their buildings are going to look like, and that we're going to do everything possible to make it a good environment for them. And then when they come back, they, there, there are going to be teachers who are going to be nervous and scared, and probably a lot are, are going to feel that way. Just because, you know, teachers, especially over the last, you'll go over the last five to seven years, this profession has changed tremendously. And I was in this conversation with somebody today. It was really one of the most safest professions where you were hugging kids and just, you know, it, it, I mean, when I first started, I, none of this would have ever, you know, you just didn't dream about a teacher's job being somewhat dangerous. And just what we've dealt with in school shootings over the last five to seven years, we had a year or two that were really high-stress for teachers. And so this has been another very high-stress environment, because they're afraid of getting sick, and they're afraid of taking, taking a sickness home to their own children or, or families and, you know, grandparents. So it's, it's about making sure those 43% can feel better that we're putting the right safety mechanisms in place for them.
Okay. Dr. Carrabilla, do you want to add something? I saw you put your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Peter, and hope I'm not muted. So in the focus groups that we've been having over the past two weeks, the teachers have really given us some feedback about what they're uncomfortable about. But as they find out more of what the plan looks like, they're being more comfortable. Today, I had a focus group of about 35 people. And what they have asked me, they emailed me after the focus group was over, and they said, do you think we could have another focus group to give you some more suggestions as to what we would like to make us more comfortable upon returning to school? And I said, absolutely. So I will be holding focus groups again for the teachers, so that they can give us some more input as to what they, their needs are and what their concerns are, so that we can make sure that they're addressed before we go back to school in September. Thank you.
Thanks, Anne. And the other, one of the other questions I had is with respect to the distance learning, are, are there going to be set guidelines and standards that are going to need to be put forward? For example, on the, I, I think I touched on this earlier, but I don't think I got a direct answer. But with respect to how much are teachers going to be given the guidance? You know, the last guidance that they received was they were, they were not required to provide any live content or recorded content. Is that going to change? That, that's changing now, right? And I know teachers had felt uncomfortable about doing that. So if we're requiring teachers to provide live content or recorded content, what's happening with respect to teachers that either have an inability to do that or don't want to do that?
Yeah, I'm, I think Anne could probably talk a little bit about how we've set the summer up, but we made that clear before we went to break. And, you know, we were talking about that before we went to break, that we were going to look different. And for summer school, even when we posted our summer, summer school positions, they were posted differently for, to meet the needs of, of distance learning in a different way. And that 50/50 rule is something that even the state came out very strong at the end of the year, going into the summer guidance, that they wanted to see more of that as district for grappling with this across the state. And Anne, I don't know if you want to add anything about the summer requirement? But I think, I think some of our board members have kids in classes, so they can share their, you know, it is live.
No, I have, I've experienced is the live content. My only, my, my only criticism on the live content is I wish it was more rather than less. And, and I think that, you know, it would be a longer day, would certainly be helpful to provide more educational content. That would be my, my criticism, but it's certainly That would be my, my criticism, but it's certainly my constructive criticism. But certainly the live component of it has been very helpful.
Thank you. Mr. Scher?
Tony and the staff, you know, this is our first update, so it's a first draft. And thank you for the update, and thank you for the, the work. There's a lot to be done, and I'm not so sure how much the board can help on some of these pedestrian things that have to happen to safely open schools. I'd rather talk about things that are maybe a little bit where the board could help and guide. Tony, could, on the second page of the presentation of the document you posted on, on on Board, maybe Mike, you could bring that up? The document that was posted on Board Docs? Yeah, that page. Tony, these, these items in dark blue, I think they, they show up elsewhere as goals. I guess, can, can you just elaborate on each, each one of those? So I'm certain I understand what you're talking about. Some of this is in kind of ed you speak. And I've learned never to, never to assume anymore in ed you speak.
Yeah, it's really, what are, what are their priorities as we're building this plan? First, if you look at the top right on the dark blue, at maintain health and safety guidelines. So we, we have to make sure this plan-
That's what you've been talking about, right?
Absolutely. We have to make sure it meets the guidelines and also the requirements.
Okay.
On the bottom right- Yep, on the bottom right is the enhanced social, focus on social emotional learning. We talked about that last spring, realizing how, how stressful and how, how much anxiety our students and our staff were having, just going through this whole COVID experience. And we want to be, we want to have strong supports in place when we start in the fall for staff and students. So the high quality programming, that's on that bottom left, that goes along with a lot of what we were just talking about with how we've changed our approach to summer instruction, how can we make it, distance learning is very different than the digital learning we had in the past. And so how can we have a better distance learning? Because the one thing we know is, people will use the word flexible, nimble, that we could see different models this year where we're full time teaching, and it feels more normal. And then on a dime, the next day, we are in a hybrid situation where now we're doing distance learning two days a week, and we're in school two days a week because we have to disinfect all, all in between there. And then we could go full, full distance learning. So it's making sure we're ready for our high quality programming, regardless of what that looks like. And that's hard. I mean, we're asking a lot of teachers to be flexible like that. Because let's say we're in school for a month and a half, and teachers aren't really utilizing distance learning. We have to think about how can they still practice some of those skills? Because if you don't use it, it's easy to lose it. And we were getting where we were really understanding platforms, so building the practice in for using cer- certain platforms so that we're prepared to go back and forth, and that's, that's the challenge. And the top left is the analysis of our achievement data, trying to make sure that we, for instance, with Linkit, that we're really personalizing and looking, what was the rate of learning last year according to, if you're a fourth grader starting in September, how much of that content did you master from third grade? And in the plan, it actually talks about, you know, getting the teachers together at the beginning of the year, so that your third grade teachers and fourth grade teachers are also having those conversations. Not only just the data, but the conversations about, did they get through all of the content? Are there things they felt like, wow, it was really hard to teach in distance learning? I didn't feel like, you know, it was, it was so difficult to get that concept across that they would tell the fourth grade teachers, I would, I would have you go in and look to make sure they really mastered that. And it's also making sure kids who are really still ready to accelerate. We're going to have students who, what we know, parents who, you know, enrolled them in advanced language course, and they were doing some things that were outside of what even GPS offered. So how do we make sure they're continuing to move and move along, maximizing the gains for all the students? So those are really just the four priorities as we prepare for September.
Okay, so I, I've read the document carefully. I appreciate the survey data that you presented last time to the board about community. Interestingly, particularly on the subject of distance learning, it matched other survey data of the Greenwich community. So it was interesting to see the way that those two separate surveys actually had the same outcome, which is helpful, but at the same time troubling because the numbers were not anywhere near what the Greenwich community expects from its school system. So, you know, we have work to do. Tony, the, the thing that, the feedback that I would give, and there was one piece I didn't know before you made this presentation, which is you're thinking about running two separate school systems? One in person and one online? I'm not so sure that's going to work, but-
Peter, that's the law. Unfortunately, that's the mandate from the state.
Well, the mandate from the state is that you offer the education. It's not a mandate. It's us, how we do that. So Peter, why don't you wait until I speak, and then you can, you know, climb all over everything that I say? I think, Tony, the takeaway that I would hope, and Karen, I hope you might take this back too, I, I think this plan needs to be focused on two objectives. So any plan we come up with, in addition to what you've already come up with, really has to meet two criteria. And there's lots of different ways to get there. So there's not one answer here that's really obvious. There's lots of different ways to do this. One is, I think the school system has to be prepared to shut on a moment's notice, either at a class, from a, all the way down from a classroom level, all the way up to the whole system. And it has to be prepared, unlike what we were able to do in the spring for a whole bunch of different reasons. We have to be prepared to keep going with education, whether it's delivered in the classroom or it's delivered at home. I think if you figure out, we know how to deliver in the classroom. We do that, we've been doing that for 30 years, 50 years, 100 years. And we do it exceptionally well in Greenwich public schools, I think. Some people may disagree, but I think we do that really, really well. What we don't know how to do is deliver education remotely. We don't know how to deliver it either on a schedule, much like we do in a building. And we don't know how to do it on demand, which was supposed to be the idea, one of the major ideas behind personalized learning. But suffice it to say, we don't know how to do either of those remotely well. Some teachers made Herculean efforts and made it work. But I think you've said many times in your updates, there were a lot of teachers who weren't able to do this and do this with fidelity. So I think the goal has to be, and I hope we don't have to use it, I hope everybody goes back to school and that all works. But we have to say, we have to nail it on how to deliver education that way. The other thing as a part of that, that we have to be able to do is whatever pedagogy we use, and we can use flip classroom, blended learning, full online, there's a whole bunch of different ones that the public doesn't know anything about, that all the educators and the board members on this phone are very, this call are very familiar with. It doesn't matter which one we pick. I, I don't, I think I'd rather hear from the educators which one they want to pick. But it has to have the goal of delivering direct instructions to students for core subjects. And what I mean by core subjects, I mean what used to be called Core Four inside the building, but it's really math, English, history or social sciences, science and language, those five, which are in everyone's schedule, K through 12. Actually, I'm sorry, K 2 through 12. We have to get to a level where we have the amount of instruction that we're delivering as if we're in the building. At a high school, that means it's got to be three, 3.5 hours a day, because that's what we're currently doing. Those are our current educational standards, they're in our policy. At a middle school, it's 4.0 hours per day. And I, I know we have a standard for time in the elementary school. I don't really know how all that time's used, so I didn't go over that one. These others are delivered in discrete classes. They're broken up into very specific time blocks at the middle school and the high school. So I think we need to come up with a model that delivers that level of instructions to kids. Because if we're not doing that, then kids are sliding. Now, it could be done, you could do asynchronous, synchronous, so on and so forth. But I think it's really critical that you guys come back with a plan that does that. The most obvious way to me to do that would be what colleges and universities are doing, which is they deliver a class, and then they stream it, and then they record it for the student who can't watch it on that schedule. Then the teacher doesn't have to worry about five different versions of how to educate a kid. They know how to do it in a building. They do it for the children that might be in the building. And then it's there and available for kids who are not in the building. And then they can pack up that entire lesson plan, all of the content that they've planned with it, deliver it remotely if they're delivering it at home, or deliver it in the building. I think the challenge we have here is complication, particularly when you're running on such a short time, is, is not our friend here. So I would encourage you to keep this as simple as possible. And the safe harbor to me would be, let teachers do what teachers know how to do right now. Give them the tools and support to be able to deliver that in a classroom or remotely. And set up a schedule that they can do that. And then you can deal with the parents who need that, or students who need that off cycle for whatever their reason may be, and then it's available to them. That would be in addition to what we're doing now. It would be an added innovation to what we do in the school system now. I'd, I'd be very uncomfortable, and I would love to hear how you would do this. Mark, you, you'll have to think about this. Particularly at the high school. We have different kids who take different classes at different levels. Some take kind of certain subjects kind of in the middle, and then they might take one or two at the higher level at the AP. Other kids will take all AP as much in honors as much as they can. They take a mix. The same is actually true in middle schools. It's less so with the out program at the elementary school. So I was sitting here thinking about this idea of having a separate online school. I don't know how you would possibly deliver the educational program that we have, which you have to do for equity in building, and run that same program with a separate school, separate teachers, with the same level of instruction if you didn't run it in one system. So I hope you guys will think about that the next time you have an update. I'm really interested to, to hear. The one last thing I would say, Tony, is you may not be aware of this, but we have a long tradition in Greenwich of we're a function of the state. We pay attention to the state. We pay attention to what the Connecticut Department, State Department of Education asks us to do. But in Greenwich, that's always been the floor, not the ceiling. It's a compliance item. So it's really helpful to get what we can get out of them and get compliance from them. But at the same time, we need to run the school system that's expected in Greenwich. And if that requires us requesting or demanding a waiver so that we can run the school system that we run, that's usually way more than what the state ever mandates. I think we should be prepared for that. We've gone for waivers before. Candidly, on racial balance as an example, we focused on student achievement. We didn't focus on social engineering. We focused on our kids, and we focused on student achievement. So there's a long history here of putting kids first, regardless of what the adults in Hartford or anyplace else want. I don't think we should be confrontational with Hartford, but I wouldn't over, I would over rotate on doing the right thing for Greenwich and the school system we have, making it safe for our teachers, great educational experience for our students. And whatever comes out of the state, the board can run interference on that, if there's interference that needs to be run.
Okay, Ms. Hirsch?
Thank you. I, I will say, just in response to, to Peter, Mr. Scher, I should say, the state was very clear, if you look through all of their guidance documents, that some of these things are absolutely non-negotiable. It's not about putting in a waiver.
Obviously, obviously.
So, yeah, I, I just, you know, so I think a lot of the stuff that's in that particular plan that Dr. Jones has put forward is based on the fact that there will be no waivers for many of these things. And we're still waiting, I know, in, in particular, for instance, one of the things I have asked Commissioner Cardona, I have reached out actually to Ms. Parisi, and countless other individuals that we work with to, to see what they're going to be doing for graduation requirements. For us to be able to properly schedule at the high school, do we need to focus on the core subjects and take out some of the other options that some of the students have in order to be able to deliver education properly and safely with their students there? In order to do that, they need to change the graduation requirements. We haven't gotten any response on that either. So I, I am on top of this, and you can always reach out to me, any member of the board or public. I will bring forward questions, comments, and concerns. I'm pretty responsive, unless I'm out with my own children. But I did want to ask a few specific questions. I know we are talking a lot about educational delivery. I know that there needs to be a specific curriculum built for teaching distance, well, because it's now called remote learning by the state, as well as doing in-class learning. And I know we'll hear more about that as we move forward. And I will certainly be asking some additional questions when we get further details on that. And I know, you know, we haven't had a discussion on a couple of other things that I think were really important, like for instance, safety. I know we've had to change entrance and exit points, classroom layout, other requirements for airflow. I know you mentioned that we're going to have to do fire drills, lockdown drills safely. And I wanted to make sure that we have whatever we need to make sure that our students are safe within our buildings based on other requirements by the state for safety. I know we talked a little bit about food service, but one of the other things I'd really like to discuss in the plan, it mentions, if students opt for remote learning, they can pick food up at school. What happens if those students do not have transportation or an adult available to pick up breakfast and lunch for them in the middle of the day? I want to make sure that all of our students who need to be fed are being fed properly.
Yeah, that's a challenge. And when we, we try to have the stops where they are very close within walking distance. That's why we have so many. And what we, what we, what we have done since March is, if a family has a very unique situation, we do, we have very few that actually needed it, but we dropped it off at their house. But again, that's a very unique service for a family who, you know, mom and dad are not able to get out, the child is too young to walk on their own. Or we also had, I can think of, you know, a family where the high schooler was watching all four of the younger siblings who were little tiny, and didn't want to try to navigate with four little ones in the high schooler to go get the lunches. So, and we, we will make sure that we take care of our families that way, you know.
Yeah, and I know, I know we need to start to take a look at how we are going to provide food services, if it's bagged, making sure that we have options other than just nutritional options and that are, you know, different options on, on the daily basis. And, you know, I'd love to make sure we, we take a look at that down the road to make sure that that's being taken place. And I'll happily help do some deliveries if they need lunch deliveries. But the other question I was going to say is, I know that you and I've had a discussion, especially if we have to bring all students back to the high school, about doing some trial runs. I don't know if you want to talk about that. Look, if we're going to be able to do any trial runs to practice some of this stuff, not just with our staff, but just to make sure that everything is, is going to work properly before we bring our students back to the schools. Personally, I'd like to invite Governor Lamont to come walk the halls at the class corridor. And I can simulate what it's like to walk through there during passing time for him. But I just wanted to see how we could address that.
Yeah, we do have our orientation days that are also part of the calendar. So that's, I think that's going to be a help. Part of it is just making sure that the protocols, the lines on the floor, all of that are in place as well. You know, even when you talk about like the bagged lunches, we know right now, part of that's going to depend on where our kids are eating. You know, if they're in elementary, for instance, the lunches have to stay pretty simplistic. We can't take something like lasagna and be eating that in a classroom because we would probably have a rodent infestation. And I say that with all sincerity. You know, one of the big challenges you have a lot of times with your youngest learners is they drop a lot of food, and so the level of cleaning when you- And so the level of cleaning when you eat in a classroom requires, it just requires a different thought process. So part of that is, is we nail down what this looks like at every building. Each building's going to be a little bit different, making sure the protocols are ready to go.
Okay. And much like Ms. Kowalski, Karen Sharon, I think probably every member of the board, I am looking forward to seeing a little bit more detail. Once we get this submitted to the state, I know we can start to focus on some of the other areas, which is the educational delivery models, some of the new technology tools that we'll be kind of introducing for our staff members, making sure all of our elementary school teachers have actual laptops if we need to close again. I know you've ordered some of those as well. But ultimately, I know, you know, we've talked about a bunch of other things, and I mentioned this at the task force meeting, but I'll bring it again. I just want to make sure that if we do have students that are doing the remote distance learning options, that we are still making sure that it's how we're going to handle extracurricular activities for them, activities, clubs, sports teams. I know we can't necessarily provide transportation, but I want to make sure that we're focused on making sure our students have, if they choose to be distance learning, that they still have access to some of that stuff in certain ways. I'm not sure how we would do that, but I know it's a robust part of our program as well to be able to offer some of those options.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to do our very best to offer, you know, a great remote program, but it is going to look different if families are choosing that option versus being onsite. Because what we can do is take children who are remote learning and then bring them back into the cohorts, you know, within a school for those children who are in those cohort groups. So we're going to give it lots of thought. And I might just clarify, when we talk about creating another school, just to, from the state perspective, part of this is how the student information system works as well. We actually had to do a call with the state, just the size of our district, trying to figure out what this would look like. Because we know, and I'm going to use, it's really a K8 issue more so than high school. You know, if it's an AP calculus teacher, we're not going to get a distance AP calculus teacher unless we enrolled them in a John Hopkins or totally different program. It's going to have to be some streaming for classes like that. Where it gets really challenging is, like, as a second grade teacher, you couldn't have a little second grader just sitting on the screen all day, looking at the classroom. You know, there's just not a lot of engagement when you're streaming, and you've got a second grade teacher engaging with the kids that are physically there. So that's where the distance, when we say a school, that's how we have to set it up for the state because they need to keep up with where our kids are. And they actually, literally, we create another school, and the kids are put in there in their classes. And they have to be in class groupings, otherwise they also can't access all of the different platforms that you use for distance learning because they're set up on the backend by class groupings. Otherwise, the teacher would be, if you had 22 students on a distance learning, they'd be logging into 22 different places around the district, different schools. It would be unmanageable. So we did, we got direction from the state, the people that actually handled this issue at the state level. Because we weren't really sure how to even utilize our, the PSIS system.
Well, thank you for that. And I know, I know we'll also be waiting for, we're waiting for some more granular detail from the state on details on mask breaks, if they are going to be giving us any guidance on class size and cohorting requirements, sizes, as we go forward. You know, I know that there are some policies that we will need to add and adjust or suspend going forwards. I know PGC will probably be putting together some meetings going forward. And one of the other areas I'd also like to make sure that we consider is the bullying issue. For instance, if a student decides, or their student, a student parent decides they don't want their child to go to school in distance learning, or they're being sent home or quarantined for illness or a family illness, and so forth. I just want to make sure that we are really cognizant, and we look at that aspect as well to make sure that our policies are updated for that.
Yeah, absolutely. And I will say, when it comes to things like mask break, that's what we're calling it in Greenwich. That is unique to us because we feel like it's important for children. But when you look at class size and cohorting, unless the Connecticut Department of Health or somebody weighs in at that level, I don't think we're going to get much more guidance than what we have now. It's really, the guidance from opening schools is bring them all back, do the best that you can. And so unless they take the tactics that some of the other states have taken recently in the last couple of weeks, where their guidance looks very different, I'm not sure we're going to get any more guidance from the state than what we have now, maybe from the Health Department. And so we'll sit back and see if they are able to weigh in based on the trends from COVID.
Well, if we do need to bring all of our high school students back all at once, and we do need to be concerned about their safety, I know you and I briefly discussed this, but, you know, I hate to bring up the word trailers, but I don't remember how much those cost us, but maybe that's something to look into. I don't know how much space we'd have to put it at places at the high school, but that might be an option if we need it, just to, just to put it out there.
We did, just so that, you know, we did talk about that a little bit, Karen, because we're on the committee together. And, you know, every district I've been in, I've dealt with. Some people call them learning cottages to make them sound better, but they're really just trailers. And, you know, when we first started looking at the high school, it was really looking at about 40, you know, 40 to 50, because you're talking half the high school. So it's a huge number. And then just running the electric for all of those out in the parking lot. And then if you bring the whole school back, and you were trying to use a trailer remodel, where do they park now? Because now we're back to having even more of an impact on the bus issue. So, and I'm not saying if the board wants us to continue to explore that, you know, we could certainly do that. But I just want you to know some thought was given to that. And is the budget really unlimited for this? And I think that's the big question. Is 20 and 30 million, when we've just cut $3 million out of our budget, is that really okay for us to think in that direction? Or is it to be distance learning and have a really robust, amazing distance learning for, you know, high school? So, and I guess that's, that's the big question. So, and from a superintendent's standpoint, when I start quantifying just what it costs for the PPE and the things we know we have to do, when we start looking at adding in different facilities, if the board wants us to look in that direction with, you know, being as frugal as we can, we certainly can, but the cost will be extremely high.
Thank you for addressing that. I knew you had started to do some research on that, so thank you for sharing.
Tony, before I pass it off, I'll just say I had a visceral reaction to trailers, given the experience at MAV. So you can keep looking at alternatives. That's not one that I'd be in favor of, just for many, many reasons. Ms. Doe.
Okay, to think that I miss conversations about fields, because that's what, now that we're talking about this. But there's a few things that we've talked about tonight, and I think that I wanted to come back to. First of all, I think I just want to reiterate, this is the beginning of a long conversation. There will be another meeting tomorrow, Karen, with your team. So I'm going, you know, we have so many questions from tonight that I know you'll be addressing.
Not my team, it's the superintendent's committee.
Superintendent, I'm calling your team, promoting you. And so I think that, you know, this is just the beginning. And then PTAC is having a conversation, and then we're going to meet again on Thursday. And clearly, we're going to have more meetings. So I'm just happy that we're getting all of our issues out there because there's so many. But, and then Karen and Christina, you are 100% correct. We will need to have policy meetings throughout the summer as well because there are definitely going to be policies that we're in need to adapt, suspend, modify, what have you. And happy to lead, and then of course, come back to the board on that. But, you know, I'm constantly in the community and with, between my children and talking to parents. And there's just a few things that I think I wanted to raise. Number one, distance learning, much improved this summer. I can speak to that personally. And it's not perfect, but it's much improved. So if that's something that we're going to have to go to in some sort of capacity, you know, the pilot's working, and I'm happy we're testing it now. So that's, that's number one. The bus thing, I think it's just great, and we need to celebrate for a moment, the flexibility we see from families, that so many people, and I will tell you, I took that survey. My kids always rode the bus. And I said, no, I'll change my schedule, and I'll drive all three of my kids. The idea of the fifth grader and the third grader having to sit together on the bus was enough to sort of make sure I drove them. So I think that you need to, but I think we need to appreciate that some of the people in the community said, no problem, let's, you know, let's all sort of do this together. So just thinking outside the box and things like that, I like that a lot. And then masks. I have to say, it's, you know, we're hearing from so many people, the idea of kids wearing masks all day. And, and I think Karen's 100% right. We need to start the conversation now with our children. And, I mean, my kids are wearing masks all the time. And in fact, my son is in the summer baseball program in town. And I have to tell you, these boys are amazing. On the dugout, that's when they're sitting in the dugout, they all have to put their masks on. The parents have to sit far away, I have to tell you. Joe, you would appreciate this. I think the coaches love that part. The parents can't come anywhere near the field. So there are some good things, but I mean, just to see how these kids, and not all these kids, we're always kids that listen all the time, and they're listening because they want to play baseball. So I think if you're told that there are no other options. And then lastly, anecdotally, I just want to say, I said to my third grader, my incoming third grader and fifth grader today, you're going to have to wear a mask when you go back to school. And they were not happy. And I said, well, the choices are, do you want to distance learn? Or do you want to go back to school with a mask? And they very both quickly said, go back to school with a mask. So if those are their options, they're going to do it. And I just think that unfortunately, that's sort of our new normal, and we have to just educate our children and get them ready for perhaps that reality. So thank you. We'll be meeting a lot more. Let's get our policy committee scheduled, and let's go from there. Thanks.
All right, Mr. Share.
Tony, it's really, it's really obvious, right? The best scenario is schools are open. The only way schools close is if all of a sudden COVID gets out of hand. I've been spending a lot of time, I'm spending for actually for five months, been following what's been happening in other countries who are way ahead of us in opening. So I've been watching specifically Denmark because they opened first. I've been watching Germany. I've been watching France. I've been watching the UK. Peter referenced, you know, Hong Kong. Asia's been a little bit behind. You're originally from Australia. I read the Australian newspapers every day, so I know what they're doing in Australia and New Zealand. It's worth looking at. I think there's one common thread that comes out of that, of where this is succeeding and where they're actually having to shut, is the idea of cohorting and potting, which is getting groups of kids together, getting them with a teacher, fewer teachers, a little harder to do with the educational program we have at the higher grades. And they are running a schedule where the kids are flexibly in the building and out of the building, or they're split in, and the teachers are in or out, depending on the day. I don't really like the model in England, but it's working. So I'm hoping you guys in this committee would think about looking at those best practices and applying that potting where we can. As an example, there's a lot of evidence that shows even though kids have much lower rates of transmission, much lower incidence of actually having the disease, presenting with the disease, and there's some argument spreading the disease, I don't know if I buy that. But what most definitely works is if you can have kids together, and then they're in and out together. There's some research that's been done, that's been circulated to us as the board, of actually being in for a certain number of days and then out for a certain number of days with that pod. I think the critical part has to be, because your plan is clearly, get everybody in the building, run schools like we used to run them, and hope that we get through that. And that's the way this, no, that's the way this plan's leveraged. It's dealing with a, the contingency of I need to go remote, or for some kids, I will go remote. But the thing is leveraged towards kids in the building, which is what the community wants. So that's the right plan to build. I think you might want to look at these models rather than reinventing in Greenwich. I've said this before, this is a place in Greenwich Public Schools, you'll never hear this. Plagiarism is a good thing. I don't think in the six weeks you have, we have a lot of time to invent in Greenwich, and we have it notorious for trying to invent stuff. You're already on a path of stealing from CDC, the state, so on and so forth. I think you should look at that at potting. The same is true with distance learning. I know nobody likes to talk about distance learning. On this call, we've spent a lot of time talking about nearly everything but distance learning. If we have to go back to distance learning, and it doesn't go well in the fall, there's going to be hell to pay. So I don't ever want to have that income outcome. No one on this phone, I'm certain, I don't need to ask, wants that outcome. So, and I know you guys are working hard, Mark, and in a new in his job, is probably working particularly hard at it and trying to figure it out. I'm sure Ralph at the high school's working his tail off about it. I'm sure the middle school people are particularly working their tail off about it, particularly Eastern with Jason, with that huge school he's got. I think you have to look at distance learning, being able to pull the ripcord and let it run. And then I think you should really look at this idea of potting and kids out. This in and out every other day, sounds like a recipe for not a good outcome. I think you guys might want to think about, fly over that target again on the committee and talk about it. One other thing is, Karen, it would be great, since you're the board's representative, you're not the board in this committee, it would be great. I don't know, maybe you've talked to all the other board members. It'd be great if you could reach out, at least to board members, and ask them what's on their mind to give feedback.
I'm happy to do so. We meet every Tuesday and Thursday, and you can always reach out as well. It's, I'm always here.
Since, yeah, I just appreciate it if maybe you'd solicit input, would be great.
I might just add, Mr. Share, just to make sure. So we are not looking at every other day. I just don't want anybody on the call to say.
Well, I heard two days, I heard two days at the high school, then a day out, then two days back. I mean, that's what you said, so.
Yeah, the two days back is a totally different group of students. So you're there two days with what you're calling a pod. Then they're off Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And then that group comes back. In our middle schools and elementary, we're looking at cohorts, which is kind of the same thing as pod, except you're within the school. Now, we couldn't do, what we're talking about at the high school, we couldn't do a K5 or a 6A.
Yeah, it's hard.
Well, then we're just, we're in the same, unless, right now, we're in the same situation with the high school where even what we're talking about, they've said, as of last Friday, we're not in compliance. So until we get, you know, the direction about being compliant or not being compliant, that may not even work for the high school. And then we are, it's going to be very, very challenging trying to figure out what that looks like at the high school if we must bring everybody back.
Yeah, Tony, I think that, I think the challenge we're talking about in compliance, I think it would just separate this into two things. If we create the environment where the parent can decide what to do, then we're going to be in compliance. So the critical thing is, is just build a school system where a parent can decide whether the kid's in the classroom or at home. And then you can run the school system, we can run the school system. Kids can plug in and plug out where they want. And then we're delivering what we need to deliver. And then it really becomes a parent and an individual decision on what a student does. And I think if you, if you think about it that way, it's actually liberating and simplifying. If we just think about what we deliver, and then it's really up to the student to plug in and take advantage of that. If we deliver it on both models at the same time, and it's flexible, then parents can make their own decisions. You said it very clearly. I don't, you have to go through as a parent, a checklist. And if your student isn't able to be there, that's a parental decision, and we're asking them to be responsible and participants in it, that's great. That's terrific. It's parent engagement. I love that that's the way you guys have come up with it. We just have to be sure we have a school system that can support that.
Yeah, I think we're working, we're, you know, we will have a school system where they can opt in to be distance, or they can be onsite. What we can't do is have parents and students changing their mind every other day. I want to stay home today, I'm going to come in tomorrow. Because not only from a instructional standpoint, but just a safety standpoint, it's one thing on a good, on a good time where we're not in COVID, just keeping up with attendance at high school. And, you know, the 17-year-old doesn't show up at high school, and we're trying to check attendance and make sure that they didn't, you know, hop on a train and go somewhere to meet somebody they met on the internet, or that they, you know, didn't have a wreck in their car on the way to, on the way to school somewhere. We wouldn't, we wouldn't want that sort of fluidity, that they will have to make a decision. But they definitely, at high school right now, and again, that's the only grade level we're talking about, just simply because we don't even know if we can really do it at high school until we get, you know, direction. until we get, you know, direction from the state, but.
Fortunately, we have part, we have parents that are partners to make sure their kids are in school, so.
Well, I.
Different than what we normally do, so I, anyway. Let's not invent problems we don't have. Let's see what we can do in these hard times.
Yeah, I absolutely agree, but I also have to look at from the safety and standpoint of the high school and the staff and making sure that what we create for them is very manageable and doable. And so families, I just don't want to, I don't want anybody who's still on, on here to think that they, they're going to be able to come in and out every other day. We have to be able to know which class and how many students are sitting in there, you know, for social distancing and all those other, other pieces. So we, you know, we will have to be able, we will have to know who are those.
I don't think that's going to happen, so let's not create problems that I don't think we're going to have. I don't think parents are going to change their kid Monday, I feel like going Wednesday, not. I mean, parents are going to make one decision or the other.
No, no, I didn't say that. You did. That's, I just wanted to clarify because.
I'm saying make it flexible enough that if they think they have to take their kid out for a couple of weeks because they're afraid of COVID, they're able to do that without creating a lot of difficulty.
Right, that's, that's what the law basically is, is saying for us. If they want to take their student out, but they have to opt out, but before they could opt back in, we have to have time, you know, to make sure that we, we're not bringing more students back in. If they, especially if they start the year like that, and you're not counting on five students being in that classroom, you bring five more students in, now all of a sudden we can't social distance. Or, you know, you bring 10 more students in, we just, we just have to have a better understanding so we can work with families and manage it. That's all.
Tony, I just want to say, this is Peter Bernstein, I very clearly heard the point on cohorts for elementary and middle school. And in fact, in middle school, we do teaming in some of our schools already, so this is just an extension of that work. And elementary, the teachers are generally with the same principal classroom teacher for most of the day, but for specials and pull-ups, so I think that works. I, you know, I hear the consternation on the high school. I guess we'll have to wait and see what the state's guidance is, given what they, what they said on Friday, so. As for, as for, for distance learning, remote learning is the state's now calling it. I think we've had plenty of discussion on it at several meetings, including tonight. I, you know, I've, I've heard loud and clear, right, more live, more schedule, more structure. I do have a child in the summer school program, not a guinea pig. Live instruction is, is working. It's happening every day. There's additional work that goes on after the class. There's homework, there's iXL. There's other resources available to students, and I think that it's worked, it's worked quite well. And I'm, I'm glad you're using that as a pilot program. I know I've said it before, but I'm so glad we're re-envisioning summer school anyway. But this also gives us a test case, so directionally, I think we're, we're moving in the right direction. Is everything going to work the way we want it to day one? Nothing is perfect. There's no plan that you could write that will, will be able to tell us. We don't have a crystal ball to tell us what, you know, what things are going to look like on, on September 5th, so. You know, I think you're, you're directionally going right. Yes, there's the devil's in the details, and that work's going to continue. Ms. Kowalski.
Sure, I had actually one question that I don't think we've, we've touched on tonight, which is, is, has there been any communication in, in the, the groups as well as from the state regarding what sports are going to look like in the fall? I'm sure there's a whole contingency of student athletes that are very concerned and worried about whether or not they're going to have their sports season in the fall. And I'd like to understand what has been the discussion in that area.
CIAC had a document that they put out, and the state has said, from the commissioner's point of view, that it will be CIAC, which is the organization that governs the athletics and activities for the high schools, that it will be their decision. Now, as of two weeks ago, you know, where they're, they're sitting right now is that it's a full return to sports. However, on July, I believe it was six or seven, they did start the conditioning groups with only groups of 10, no larger than 10. And, you know, starting the conditioning for the summer, they did have to shut down, I think it was at least two groups that I heard over the last week or so where they had a positive case. And so a lot of it's just going to depend on where COVID is trending and, you know, what decisions they make. And they've also looked at things like, will they perhaps have a season, but there could be no spectators? You know, so it could be, they try to have the season, but it looks different than it has in the past, and it's more restrictive. They did consult some major organizations about flipping seasons. Should they try to, you know, have some of the lower-risk sports in the fall and, and change? And they were advised, the advisement that they got was no, that they needed to go ahead and start the year planning for the regular season. But again, it's going to be like, you know, everything, everybody fully expects it could change a week before school starts. I know football season, I believe, starts right around August 17th, so I'm sure that, you know, they'll be looking at that season very early on to see how that's going. I will hear from the CIAC director again on Friday. He's coming to our superintendent's meeting again. He was just with us a few weeks ago and is keeping us updated.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, Ms. Downey.
I'm just following up on the issue of choice. So it's parent choice, whether their child's going to be going to school or distance learning, right? At the start of your, the year, people have to choose one or the other, as well as whether they're going to be on a bus or not. So assuming we put in our plan to the state next week, you need, again, you can tell them they're a planner. You're then going to send something out to the parents where they're going to be making their choices so that you can do your classroom planning and your transportation planning and communicate to the parents what the impact of their decision is. Is that correct?
That, that's correct. And if they opt out, more than likely, it'll take a two-week period before they could opt back in, just so that we can manage what's happening across the district.
I think more clarity, I, I agree. Like, I think be very upfront and transparent about saying, if you choose distance learning, which is totally your prerogative, should you change your mind, these are the criteria for returning, if you choose to return your child to the classroom. Maybe we can't do that on the buses, so. And in terms of the staff giving you, you know, any staff issues you may have, that people who really aren't comfortable, are they are going to be given a similar sort of communication, you know, later in the month, kind of thing for your planning?
Absolutely. Shemane's working on that right now and also, you know, getting obviously legal advice on that as well. Everybody in the state is how that has to be managed. Because there will be a multitude of reasons why somebody may, may choose one or the other, and we have to just make sure how we handle sick leave and don't, you know, somebody who's a distance teacher, but they're not taking leave. There's a lot of, lot of nuances to the human side of that.
And then I had one other question, and Peter alluded to it earlier. The state plan does not require us to say what our closure or adjustment policies, I'm just going to use. I mean, because I think we all say there are going to be cases that come up, right, in a classroom? Like, the second grade classroom in an elementary school, a kid is test positive. So the state is not at present requiring us to say what we're going to do or how we're going to handle it. Is that correct?
Right now, initially, the state had said they were going to give us a decision tree. It's in, even in our plan, it's, it's pretty set by the, by the health department right now, so if we have, if there's a case inside the classroom and a child or a student tests positive, then that entire class has to be quarantined for the 14 days. If the teacher has somebody in their home, or the child has somebody in their home that's positive, then that child or that teacher must be quarantined. So there's a basic decision tree. They've been using it since.
Okay.
But, but whether or not they're going to come out with more guidance, they've kind of gone back.
Okay. And then we'll just comply with whatever that decision tree is going for. So we don't have to reinvent the wheel and come up with our own policies or procedures for how it's going to work.
Yeah, it really comes down to the health-related professionals, and they guide us on that, on, you know, who needs to quarantine and who doesn't.
Okay, okay. No, no, because that just wasn't explicitly stated in the plan, and I didn't know if the state required it. Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Hirsch.
So I, I was just going to say in response to Ms. Downey, you know, I know we, Tony answered most of your questions, but you know, there have been also guidance from some of our legal counsel on, on issues like that. I know there was some information that was, was sent out in regards to that, in case we need to discuss sick leaves or MOU or whatever it may be going forward. And also for families and students that need to quarantine. This was the actual, the question I had. You know, the one area that we really haven't discussed is, you know, you have mixed cohorts on buses. We'll have mixed, you know, families that have students at elementary and middle, or middle and high school, or, or what have you. How are we going to ensure if we do have to cohort, you know, it's split high school 50-50, are we going to make sure that families have students going to schools on the same day? And how are we going to handle notification? I know we are required by the state to submit information should we have a case in school, or suspected cases don't need to be reported, but, um, you know, I just, how are we going to be looking at sending information out to parents?
Yeah, so a couple of things, the cohorts on the buses. That is one of the challenges. We're hoping that enough parents will also drive their students so that, you know, the bus is not so full, but if a student is positive that rode the bus, highly likely it could impact the students that are riding the bus. And, and that would come down to the health professionals. The other thing is a student who has symptoms that they're sending home, you know, versus a student who has somebody positive in their house, or they've tested positive. So those are handled differently as well. As far as notification, that will come down to the compliance aspect. And if it's within a classroom and the classroom's having to quarantine, obviously, they're going to know the reason, you know, why we have to notify. But as far as having a blanket, somebody in your building had COVID and, you know, and you say, look at the high school where it's such a large group, that's highly likely not going to happen just for, for HIPAA reasons. But again, that's part of that decision tree, that health professionals have to help us with that.
Sorry, thank you for, for giving us a little bit more detail on that, because I know, I know that is a question that is probably on quite a few people's minds, so thank you.
All right. I can see the two of the attendees have their hands up. Unfortunately, we're, we're not taking comments that way. If you'd like, you can email the board or the superintendent, or actually both with your, with your questions and comments. I don't see any other board members with comments. I'll remind everybody, we're going to reconvene on Thursday. The reopening committee is meeting tomorrow. I'm sure Tony was furiously taking notes with some of our discussion tonight. So, you know, I guess we'll kick off Thursday with, with anything new from the committee, another round of questions, and obviously, Tony, you know, if you can answer some of the things that were asked tonight, if we get more guidance from the state. I obviously would suggest looking at the New York plan for ideas. Again, it seemed to be more robust than Connecticut. I'm shocked. Mr. Scher, I see your hand.
Peter, is it possible that we can conduct a virtual, either virtual or, you know, since we're going to be opening anyway, now, a, whatever it is. I really think we need a public hearing on this. This is such a topic that's so important to the community. I know we're, you know, some of us are getting emails, some people are sending in emails. I, I find it really helpful to actually have input, particularly on such an important topic like this. For me, this is right up there with start time and some of the other bigger educational issues, racial balance, other educational issues we've had to deal with. It's really unprecedented, so maybe we ought to have a public hearing where we can have people come in and, and give us their thoughts and views and schedule a meeting just for that.
Well, I will talk to the superintendent and the vice chair in the morning, but I would note, we have 6,500 individual responses to surveys, the focus groups and the number of emails we've gotten, so I don't know what more we're going to learn from that, but we'll, we'll talk about it tomorrow and see what's, what's feasible in the timeframe we've got in front of us. With that, we'll close out the discussion on this item, and we will move to the related item, which is the school calendar. So Dr. Jones, if you want to walk us through what you're proposing.
Thank you, Mr. Bernstein. We are, we are proposing that we take the first and the second of September and make those professional learning days with the orientation days moving to the third, and the first day for all students to be on the Friday. And that again is just, we have so much professional learning to do when we come back in the fall, not only about school-building protocols, but the requirements that were added as part of the state plan for where we have to do PD sessions. We also want to train on some of our programs, making sure teachers are very comfortable in those areas, like with Google meets. I'm going to see how to utilize the features, and just giving our teachers time to set up their rooms. We had teachers who took a lot of stuff home. You know, they came and picked some things up and dropped it off quickly at the end of the year. But just putting their rooms back together this year, and especially knowing that it's going to have a different look. And so we're going to do the best we can to have stuff spaced out for them, but they're going to have to come in and be comfortable in their own room and their own environment, so it really was adjusting those two days. The biggest change is making the Columbus Day on October the 12th an instructional day. And then it changed the very back end of the calendar in June. So that was, and I will say, I did see GEA's letter today. And, and what was in the GEA, well, I say the letter, from Carol's public comment tonight. I think she was even advocating that we start on the 8th, which would have been, you know, another two days. And she was right, in that we could absolutely utilize the time. But if you would like for me to, you know, to work that calendar up to see what that does to the June 30th, kind of end of the calendar year, I could certainly do that for, and then you can make a decision between the two calendars next week, and we could probably gain some more feedback. I didn't see that until right before the meeting tonight, so I didn't realize that, that they were advocating even for an extra two days, because they feel like they're such a need.
So Tony, this is Peter Bernstein, just my two cents. I don't know the value, starting on a Friday before Labor Day anyway. Just for timing purposes. Ms. Hirsch.
Well, Mr. Bernstein, you pretty much hit exactly what I was going to say, which was, you know, I think that our staff definitely needs time to readjust and reset up their classrooms and really learn the new protocols. I know that there's going to be a lot of questions and concerns from our educators that we need to address at that time. And I was going to make the exact same comment that, you know, would it really make sense to start the Friday before a holiday, especially if we have students, you know, coming in for one day? It'd be fine if we, you know, if the students who are doing orientation did it on that half-day. But, you know, we're going to have a, you know, Monday off as well. It sort of seems, seems a little odd. Rather give that time to the teachers if we can.
Yeah, I think if there's support for that, I, I know that, I, I mean, obviously, Mr. D'Amico and Dr. Carabillo, we haven't discussed it because we didn't see this before the meeting, but we can certainly go back and look at the calendar again and how we might maneuver that to bring the next version to you next week. And also just to touch base with GEA, make sure I'm understanding what, you know, what they're requesting. But it, it sounded as though they would like to start on the. And actually, when I looked at the Friday, I was looking at it more from if you started school, it would be a protocol day for kids. Because if everybody's back on the Friday, it's practicing how you go down the hall, how you, you know, where the sink tape is, all that kind of stuff. But there definitely is a need for teacher training, so.
What we do know, even though travel's been questionably restricted, people, if they, if they know it's a holiday weekend, sometimes won't send their child back on that first day. So if these protocols are exceptionally important for students, we want to make sure that they truly are there and in the building, learning them. I know our educators are going to need to learn new digital platforms and also, and, you know, link it and all the other stuff as well. So more time we can give them to get this, a smooth entry, the better, I think.
Okay, we'll adjust this and bring you a new version. It sounds like, Mr. Bernstein, if that is kind of the will of the board for us to bring you another version to consider Thursday, an updated version.
Well, we've got two more people with their hands up, so let's, let's hear from them and then go from there. Mr. Scher. Peter, did you want to speak?
Yeah, sorry, muting and unmuting.
No worries.
Tony, I was on a different point. I totally agree. I mean, I don't know what it was like at Falls Church or elsewhere, but in Greenwich, parents just won't bring their kids. So if, if they'll just opt out, that's the way of a workaround holidays, so. But it doesn't make a lot of sense. If you're expecting to have a lot of people there, you'll probably have a low attendance day, so that's probably not. But, you know, that wasn't really my point. The more, the thing I really wanted to say was, given that there's all this training and preparation for teachers, I'm wondering why, because parents don't know what they're really looking at. They're looking at two calendars. They're looking at the calendars for kids in schools. They're also looking at the employment calendar for our employees. I would think that what you would do is get teachers back earlier. I would, wondering why we wouldn't move up the. I would wondering why we wouldn't move up the days, use those days as professional learning days. I would have dedicated day to distance learning tools with all 900 teachers or, you know, split them up, some in the media center and some in the auditorium because you can't put them all in, even though we've got 1,300 seats at the auditorium so they can social distance. I'd love to see a calendar that on the employee side was a little more front loaded with a little bit more planning time. I didn't like in this plan that they're only planning their first lesson before school opens. We should probably plan more of those than just the first one because the first one's going to be gone in the first three weeks. So I'm thinking of creating more time for teachers. It means they have to come back from their summer vacation earlier, but I'd rather see much more preparation in the event, God forbid, knock on wood, we don't hit the situation where we have to go out again. I'd rather be more prepared, not less prepared. So I hope you would take that into account and maybe discuss it with the teacher union president again about her employees.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly discuss it. It was trying to work within the framework of the approved calendar and moving like that October 12th date to another date. I don't know that we could, and again, we can certainly have that discussion. I'm not sure what, what the stance would be from GEA about front loading when teachers haven't prepared for that. I don't, I just don't know. So we can certainly ask.
All right, Ms. Kowalski.
Sure, thanks, Mr. Bernstein. I think two points. One, I'm not keen on starting on a Friday, which I think was voiced and the point, several points, if that Friday is important for learning all of the, you know, for students to be there, make sure they learn the new protocols and procedures. And it's a potential opt-out day because parents just won't bring their kids. I'll add to the additional point, if it's so important, putting it on a Friday right before a three-day weekend, even if they do come, I think there's a lot of value lost there, particularly for our young learners, as we call them. So I would even say for that reason alone, starting after the holiday, so you just keep going with the momentum of a four-day week is probably has some added benefit there. And also to kind of add on to Peter's comments, I would approach, you know, the teachers with respect to start coming in a little bit earlier. I think there's a lot of new things this year particularly that they'll need to be prepared for. And I think more preparation is better than less preparation. And if we can anyway, front load that so that we can give the opportunity for new teachers coming on, older teachers that need to learn new tricks. I think that if we can get them in sooner rather than later in order to give them the adequate guidance they need and to help their own confidence level in what they're about to, in this new changing of the teaching world, I think that that has added benefit.
Yeah, and I do just want to, just for people who are watching, when you think about school calendars, so if we bring them back earlier, then it either means kids are still starting, you know, that first week of September, or the teachers have basically a day off, like on the third or the fourth, because we still have that 180, 187 days where we have to balance the calendar. So if we, if we had a pure bring them back, you know, a day or two early or even for those staff that wanted to, we would have to pay them for those days. So we were trying to get a calendar adjustment through the natural calendar where we wouldn't have to, you know, it wouldn't be like adding more days because that's a negotiated bargaining piece. But I certainly, we can ask, but if we brought them back to 26, I'm just saying, I think it would be the 26. You wouldn't actually gain more professional development time, it would just be a different time where the kids would then be back on Thursday or Friday still.
One question on that piece, and I don't know if there's any flexibility, so this may be just a naive question, which is, you know, each month they have a day, you know, a professional learning day, I think they're called. Can we use those days?
If you use an early release day, then it's no longer an instructional day. So you have to go plug in another instructional day for the students.
Got it, okay.
And Tony, just looking at the, looking at the proposed calendar, I mean, the last day of school, given five snow days is, is basically almost against the legal last day of school, which is June 30th. So we're already running out of days, you know, unless the state changes their mandated number of days, which obviously they did this year because of COVID. But, you know, we'd need a clarification from the state much earlier. I just worry we're going to bump up against the end. I think those days at the beginning for the teachers are very important. So I guess we'll, we'll look forward to seeing a revised calendar on Thursday after you've had a chance to touch base with Carol and your team. All right, we're going to move on. So the next item on the agenda is summer transfers. I'll remind the board that they granted the authority, the executive committee to approve the summer transfers, but there's a little bit of an update here. So it's an action item, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion to approve the, the summer transfers. Can we get a second for that? We'll put it on the table. Ms. Stowe is the second. All right, Mr. O'Keefe, I'm going to turn it over to you for explanation.
Okay. Michael, if you could load the, the charts, I'd appreciate. So the purpose of the, the summer transfers is to look at the, the accounts by major object code. And to the extent that there is a negative balance in any of the major object codes, we transfer funds from one, one to another. So in this particular chart, I want to mention a couple of things and give you the lay of the land here. You see down the left-hand side, you see the five object codes, personnel services, services other than personnel, supplies, maintenance and fixed charges. That's the 100 through 700. And then the columns, as they read across, is the budget, the approved budget for 1920, 163, 525, 144. And next to that, this you're seeing for the first time is our preliminary year-end actuals. And you'll see that it's lower than we were expecting it to be, 161, 452, 228. So right now, we're looking at an actual versus budget of 2,072 surplus versus what we were projecting in the May financials. I'll get to that in a second. So from that point, then you have all the transfers and these are shown on this particular chart as net transfers. So you could have plus transfers, minus transfers between each of the major object codes. And you'll see that in greater detail on the next two charts. But the net of it is with these net transfers, you can see the, the initial budget, the initial budget on the second column and the second to the last column is the budget after transfers. And you'll see that, you know, the net is, it nets out to zero. So, so that's, that's the, that's the net of the transfers. I did want to mention something quickly about the, the year-end balance. What we found as, and if you recall in the May forecast, in the May financial forecast, we were looking at upwards of $500,000 surplus after funding the sped, sped overrun and also the, the pre-spend that was approved at the last meeting of $1.8 million. As it turned out, the, we had more COVID-related savings than we had anticipated. There were quite a number of purchase orders and encumbrances that had been established prior to the February 20 expense freeze and also prior to the COVID closure. So what happened was there was a number of encumbrances that ended up because of the closure not being realized or not being expensed. So we had quite a bit more than we thought. It's, I guess, in a way, it's a good thing in that as we're heading into next year and we're looking at additional expenses that Tony had mentioned between technology, PPE, supplies, additional staffing for cleaning the building, so this money will come in handy. So that's, that's it for the, right now for the, where we are preliminarily at year end. On the next chart, if you could flip the chart, just getting back to the transfers, you'll see that we had a total of $3,459,000 increase and a 300, $3,459,000 decrease. So you can see at a total of $3.4 million accounts for approximately 1.4 million of sped, sped services exposures plus the 1.8. That makes up the vast majority of the $3.4 million. And then the next chart, which I'm not going to go through, is just, you know, the source of the funds. The column says remaining balance, but in actuality, this is the source, these are the accounts that were sourced for that $3.4 million transfers to other accounts. I'll take any questions if you have any.
So Sean, thank you for that. On the, on the $2 million, I guess I'd note these are COVID-related savings. So one time, they're going to go back to the town general fund and I know you mentioned, you know, hoping that there's funds available. So I know you, you're all now working through the additional costs that are anticipated. So I guess to the BET members that are, that are still dialed in, you know, we'll, we'll probably be having continued communication with you. Obviously, we will have a little bit of the federal money, although as Tony mentioned, thanks to, thanks to the education department, some of that money is now going to go to private schools, although we're still waiting on that calculation. And I know Sean, you had mentioned, you know, seeking whatever possible grant money there is possible, there is available. I know the state is yet to basically free up any money for us. So I just, I just note that that's out there. I appreciate the continued work you and your team are doing on this. You know, I'm glad we're, we're able to give that back to the, to the town because we will likely need some of that to fund our COVID return. All right, Mr. Scher, I see your hand.
Mike, can you put those charts back up? Sean, I'm trying to bridge from one to the other here.
Between one and two?
No, between what you told us the last time we met and what you're telling us now. I think when I look at chart two, maybe I'm just a little confused here. I thought we got more from transportation than $2 million. Is that all we negotiated?
We, we got about $2.1 million. That was the savings.
And then we didn't spend $600,000 on maintaining plants, right? That's operational expense on, on, because that was budgeted, but we didn't spend it, right?
Exactly, yeah, that was predominantly things like utilities.
$700,000 on instruction that we didn't spend, that we underspent, right?
That's correct.
Okay, I'm sorry, it's 760 on fixing stuff that we didn't spend. Is that right?
Between the 600 and the 160?
Yeah, so I'm saying here, we got, we got 2 million back. I don't know why it says, if it's 2.1, why it says 2 million. But.
The 2 million is all that we transferred, so we left a million, 100,000 in there.
What does that mean, transferred?
Meaning that, meaning that we had 2.1 million dollars of. Yeah, these are just transfers.
And this is money you were able to save out of these accounts? So, so we had 3.459 million other than, you know, including transportation buses we didn't run. We had a lot of other money, we had a million and a half dollars of regular spending that we didn't spend, correct?
That's right. That's exactly right.
Okay, I'm dying to know why, can someone explain why we didn't spend $760,000 maintaining our buildings?
Oh, the 760, the biggest piece of that is utilities. In that 600 number, the biggest piece is about 550 for utilities.
Okay.
So we knew, we knew, we knew that going in.
That's a good answer, right? Because we know the buildings aren't open, so we saved the money.
Exactly.
Right, okay. Then over here, right, I'm trying to bridge the increases to what we had sped 1.4. I didn't think, why did we need 1.4? Our gap was less than that.
The gap back in April and May was about 1.1 million, but it increased at the end of the year.
What precisely was that increase?
These additional settlements and tuition payments that were not encumbered.
Okay, and then the 1.3 to instruction moving in, that is what? How does this bridge across to that 1.8 that encumbered? And here it looks a little bit more than 1.8.
The 1.8 you're referring to is what? Sorry?
Well, didn't you say you needed to encumber 1.8?
For the pre, for the pre-spend?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
But this adds up to like two. 1, 3, 5, 6, that's 1.9, 1.25, that's a little over 2 million. I, I just, I'm, I'm losing the plot here and I'm just trying to understand what happened. I mean, this is fine, it's great. You wound up spending every penny that was left over is what you did, right?
Well, in fact, we didn't. We left $2 million.
So wait a minute, you're saying that our, say that part again, you're saying that we were going to leave, I thought we were going to leave four to five and you're saying we left two on the table?
Yeah, if you go back to.
I'm sorry, Sean, you've gone on mute.
Sorry, yeah, the 2072 in the middle of the chart is, that's our actual ending balance, not the 500,000. So we actually, we actually did that by 1.5.
Even after we covered sped, even after we spent 1.8 on pre, we're leaving $2 million on the table this year?
Correct.
Wow.
Yeah, it was, it was across many areas, temporary services about 350, consulting about 350, professional development about 175, it's across the board. But these are encumbrances that were made prior to the expense freeze that never, never got spent.
Yeah, I, I think that was the real story. It was obvious to me as a finance person, you coming in, whoever preceded you, they had completely lost control of forecasting. And I'm really impressed that you, in the short period of time you were there, got a grip on forecasting. You know, what a mess. I can't believe we're leaving $2 million on the table this year. You know, we dumped our strategic management system allegedly because it couldn't be, but we apparently have the money to pay for this stuff. Technology, for example, Tony revealed in the last meeting that none of our teachers had laptops. We could have been paying for this out of this and not made it a problem for the future. Wow, okay, it is what it is. The books are closed now, so there's no opportunity to get at that $2 million, correct?
Correct.
Sean, I'm really glad you're here. I'm certain that something like this will never happen again while you're on your watch.
You are absolutely right about that.
This is, this is just amazing.
You are absolutely right about that.
Again, I'm so glad you're here. It's great to have a finance person running the books here that actually will have a grip on our finances. This is an embarrassment for us. I'm embarrassed, but you know, it is what it is.
All right, Ms. Stowe?
Sean, I just think the headline is an additional 2 million going back to the town. That's awesome. The administration continues to tighten your belts. You were conservative and you were smart. And now I think I'm going to get a property tax refund. So, thank you.
Yeah, I, Sean, I want to echo that. I mean, the idea is that, that these are, these are savings that have been realized basically COVID. You know, the spending would have occurred otherwise. Those monies were encumbered and obviously not spent, so that's, that's the good news. All right, so the motion on the table is to accept the transfers. I'm going to take a roll call vote. So Bernstein is a yes. Stowe?
Yes.
Hirsch?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes.
Holson?
Yes.
And Scher? All right, so the next meeting is Thursday, 7 o'clock. So we'll, we'll talk about reopening again, take up the school calendar. And then, you know, if we need additional meetings, obviously we'll, we'll have that discussion and I'll, I'll be emailing board members for availability. And I'll be emailing board members for availability. With that, Mr. Kelly, did you have a motion you wanted to make?
As a matter of fact, I did. I would like to make a motion to adjourn, please.
And I am happy to second your motion. So taking a quick roll call, Bernstein, yes? Stowe?
Yes.
Hirsch?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
And Cher?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for tuning in, especially the 108 of you who stuck it through to the end with us. Have a good night.